Father, we also ask for your protection over our first responders, those serving in our military and all of their family members. We ask that they may be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Okay, consent agenda. As a reminder, all items under the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approval of the consent agenda and will be moved to the new business. Do we have a motion for consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous passage, Your Honor.
Okay, awards and presentations. And I have a proclamation here that I want to read. Social Security Administration. Whereas the Social Security Administration has recently entered into a short-term lease intending to allow the Social Security more time to consider moving from 253 West Superstition Boulevard to more than 20 miles away into the town of Gilbert. And whereas this current location in Apache Junction serves some of the most at-need retirees of Greater Phoenix, and the move of this type 20 miles away represents an undue burden on these retirees and many of whom use public transportation to visit Social Security offices in person. And whereas the nearest location for the Apache Junction surrounding area is 702 West Jermaine Avenue in Mesa, which is 21 miles away from the Apache Junction office, but only five miles from the proposed relocation to Gilbert with significantly far fewer Social Security beneficiaries. And whereas the city of Apache Junction and areas on the east end of the Greater Phoenix remain some of the largest growth areas for retirees, with residents in Apache Junction alone having an average of age of 52.4 years old and the median income of $21,000 a year, compared to the Gilbert proposed location, which represents a much younger age group estimated at 33.9 years of age with a median income of $84,000 a year. And whereas only 57.7 of Gilbert residents have income under $80,000 compared to nearly 90% of Apache Junction residents with income under $80,000. Gilbert's veteran population is estimated at 1.72% compared to Apache Junction's of 2.81% with one zip code at nearly 4% veterans. Gilbert's zip codes with the highest population of 65 and older is 9.81% compared to Apache Junction's zip code with the highest population of 65 and older at 39.79%. The average lease rates for the office space in Gilbert is $23,000.6 cents per square foot, which does not include the additional tenant improvements that Social Security would need to pay for updating the Gilbert location in comparison. Apache Junction's office space is an average of $17.95 per square foot with no need for tenant improvements. Now, therefore, I, Chip Wilson, find the Social Security's decision to move the facilities out of Apache Junction egregious whoa, that's a heck of a word here, to the population and meant to serve a gross neglect and disservice for our veterans and retirement community. Who I'm going to present this to?
Jennifer, can you accept that for us?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, announcements and current events from the council members. Brandon.
Wait, not that one. This one. So, this is just a reminder, the 23rd NJ ROTC Car Show Truck Motorcycle Show is coming up on Saturday, February the 6th. So, this Saturday, I believe it's at the high school. No. 300 Apache Trail, is that?
I believe it moved down into downtown Altrail and Phelps.
Okay. So, on Apache Trail and, oh, there it is, Apache Trail and Phelps. So, all of those proceeds do go to benefit the local ROTC program. So, please come out and support that. And then, we also have the upcoming First Friday on February the 12th and 13th, which is never really actually on the First Friday. So, but that is in the same plaza, the old Bayless Bachelors Plaza, for those who remember that, on Phelps and Apache Trail. So. Yeah, and then, what day was that last week? No, I can't even remember. Anyway, last week, Mayor Wilson, Vice Mayor Rizzi, and myself were the three councilmembers who went to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport and got to witness the Antonov land and unload. They had four F-16s coming over originally from Israel, and then it landed in Iceland and then came here. It's one of the largest planes in the world. So, very cool to see. And I believe there's another slide of pictures as well. And I'm sure those two will mention something as well. So, that's everything I have.
Gail?
I'd like to give an update on what the Apache Junction Community Development Corporation has done. We've completed a yard cleanup on North Saguaro from an individual who had some handicap issues and wasn't able to, but was a huge code case for the city. And thanks to some just-served teenagers, there was about 20 of them, 15 to 18 years old, and six outside adults. It was a five-week project. There was nine tons removed from this one backyard and 25 tires. So, it was truly a huge code case. We had, and we also did another one that was much smaller on West Choya. It only took four dump trailers. But this is completely all volunteer. We do pay for the dump. We get a reduced rate from Republic. But this is not free. It's nothing from the city. It is this complete nonprofit efforts. We also picked a date of October 9th for our next Make a Difference Day, which we've chosen the Field of Dreams in front of the Boys and Girls Club. We're working on what improvements we can make so that the kids actually have an area they can come out and grass and play. We've got, we're selling bricks live online. The first month that this was available, we got four orders. And they will be placed at the focal point within 30 days. We're trying to do that so that they're placed every month. So, people aren't waiting for that. Also, for the Make a Difference Day, we need t-shirts again and t-shirt sponsorship. We can take up to 30 businesses, $200 each. And you can also do it completely online for the Apache Junction Community Development Corporation. Thank you.
Robert?
I don't have any.
Yeah, just, you know, like Brayden said last Thursday, the mayor and Brayden and I had spent about four, four-and-a-half hours on the tarmac down at the Mesa Gateway Airport. And it was really an amazing opportunity to watch this giant airplane come in. It opens up from both the front and the back. And it was just incredible to watch. The one picture off to the right up above, it's a little hard to tell where the, that's the nose that flipped up. But the little white thing on top is actually where the pilot's cockpit. So, it kind of looked like a little tiny airplane inside of a giant airplane. It was really pretty cool. It was a pretty neat opportunity. The Ukrainians that were, the people that were, the crew, didn't speak English. But it was really interesting to watch how everybody was able to communicate with the people here. And just a neat opportunity. So, we really, we're grateful for that. And I think the mayor just had a grin from ear to ear for the entire four hours. He couldn't stop smiling. He was just, he was just really excited about that. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have something I want to let the community know about if they don't know already. Chamber of Commerce has a program. It's called Spring Into Savings. It's a shop small program. The Chamber of Commerce received a grant to help Chamber members put, get money back into their, you know, revenue because of COVID and everything that's going on. So, with the grant that the Chamber received, they went out to the Chamber members who wanted to be involved. These listed here on the television. And they bought $400 in gift cards at each business. They bought 20, the increments are $20 gift cards. So, that meant that they bought 20 gift cards. And when any of you or anybody in Apache Junction goes and makes a purchase at any of these businesses, keep your receipts. Because if you spend $50 or more, or if you do more than one time you shop at any place and you have two or three receipts that total $50 or more, you can take the receipt or those receipts to the Chamber of Commerce, and you can pick out and get for free a $20 gift card at any of these businesses. And this program began about two weeks ago on January 20th, and it's going to run until May 1st. So, shop our local businesses and help them out and get $20 back for a $50 purchase. Can't beat that deal.
Kelly?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, I've got just really, I'm going to comment concerning the, first off, the plane on it. If you notice the one all the way to your right, or left, rather, you see the F-16, which is rolled out. It gives you a comparison as to the one to the left is showing the plane. They have two F-16s. Of course, they've removed the wings, and they're sitting in there. It was really something impressive. Not only seeing this huge plane coming in and landing, but also carrying this cargo, really, all the way from Iceland to here. That was nonstop. It was something that was very unique in it. I also want to make a quick little announcement. We have someone that today is celebrating his 20 years with the city. And I want to recognize him. 20 years ago today is when he started. And so, I want to personally recognize him. And Matt, you want to throw in a few extra words on there?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're in trouble, Matt.
It's not too often. You get an opportunity to embarrass your boss a little bit. Today is the actual day of Bryant's 20th year with the city. So, he joined the city on February 2nd, 2001. I think I did my math right. And so, Bryant, of course, is a pillar in the community. He and his family have served the community for a long time. And let me be the first to say Bryant, Bryant, you're really growing up fast. So, you get to see some of Bryant's younger days here. And during those 20 years, I think everyone who's known Bryant for all or part of that time would agree that he's been a great leader since day one. And he even wore glasses once upon a time. I learned through these pictures. His infectious can-do attitude, his enthusiasm, hard work, his inclusive and friendly approach to his work, I think shows through the many great things that he helps the city council accomplish and your duties as well. Whether it be the building of City Hall, the MGC, the library expansion, the transition to the employee health insurance with other municipal, with other cities in the valley to keep costs low for the community and the employees. He's been in the middle of it all. So, he, of course, has raised his three daughters here and his wife. I know without them, he couldn't do what he does for the community. So, we want to thank them as well. And so, Bryant is super accessible, super approachable. I think anyone who gets to know him, that's what makes him a great city manager and a great employee of the city. So, I'd like just to congratulate him. And if everyone would join me in a round of applause for his 20 years here at the city.
You've not aged a bit. Not a bit. You look like a kid.
A few LEDs and a few gray hairs.
Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really has been an honor to be a part of our community for these years. And I'm so grateful for the great staff and the great councils that I've had a chance to work with. And I'm so grateful for this community. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. And I am so grateful for the opportunity to be able to serve as city manager for this great city. Super huge shout-out to my family for being a great support. And I'm so grateful for them. And also so grateful for you all and your support of our staff. And, you know, we had lunch today and celebrated a little bit. And it was just neat to see how much an impact it has the staff that you work with, because you spend so much time with them. For my report, it's brief. It's just a huge shout-out to a couple of our, or one of our officers over at the police department. We received a couple of letters and emails to Chief Kelly. And one of them was for Officer George Ruwan. Is such an amazing officer. A resident sent an email saying, and this doesn't happen, you know, sometimes. And we just received one who also, an email of someone who was pulled over and received a citation. And they said, "Thank you for doing that." And they were very respectful and courteous. And it's very important to us that our community and our, and our police department be able to have tremendous trust. And that trust is done little by little, day by day. And I want to thank Officer Ruwan and all of his police officers and support in the police office that helps make that happen. And to Chief and his leadership for the culture they create in helping our community out. So, thank you, Chief. And then tonight, we have just a quick presentation. Al, if you could please come up. We wanted to discuss the use of our chamber audio and visual. So, just very briefly, Al, if we could do a quick one with our council.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Wilson, councilmembers. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the City of Apache Junction. And with the new councilmembers now seated and, of course, things getting started here in the year 2021, we wanted to get a real quick reminder that we now are seeing a lot more folks who are tuning in to see our city council and, of course, city boards and commissions meetings. You can do so on our website at www.AJcity.net/live. And you can see all of the council, board, and commission meetings there. As they happen, they're also, of course, they're available for viewing after the fact as well. But as a result of that, the audio is something that's very, very important because, of course, the audio needs to be caught by that recording so everybody can hear. So, a quick reminder on how the livestream works. First of all, the livestream begins five minutes before each meeting. So, keep that in mind. And then ends right when the gavel goes down at the adjournment of each meeting. The mics are muted only during breaks. Sort of keep that in mind. And they are on at all times as long as the AV system is running, which is, you know, usually the case in this room. I also remind, and I'm going to try to be the good example here, councilmembers, board members, and everybody who uses our microphones within the chambers, please try to stay about five to six inches away from the microphone. That probably picks up your voice best so it's not over-modulated or not. You know, if you're too far away, they don't, it doesn't pick you up. And I remember, remind that for also our general public because if you do come up for call the public or during a public hearing or to present to the council in some way, you use this podium mic as well. Try to stay about five to six inches away from the, from the mic to make sure that everybody can hear you. And so, as we go forward, we want to remind everybody that you do have access to see council, board, and commissions meetings on our website through the old Channel 11, if you still have a cable system. And we will do our best to try to record those all and get them up for you to watch after the fact as well. Any questions?
Al, does that mean we should be concerned about hot mics?
I would always be very, very careful. You do have a little switch right there on your mic, so. But I do remind, because it's real easy to be looking at notes or, you know, getting away from the mic to make sure you stay by the mic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, public hearings. Consideration for application for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Barrows Pizza. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This application is for a Series 12 Liquor License, which allows the sale of all spirituous liquors. It is for Barrows Pizza. That'll be located in the Fries Marketplace. They are still working with Development Services. They are working with them regarding their proper permits, their inspections, and their tenant improvements. All four departments have performed their safety and ADA compliance inspections. This includes our Planning Department, the Building Department, Fire Department, and PD. All of them are recommending your recommendation for approval. The applicant was contacted and should be here this evening to answer any comments, questions that you have.
Any discussion from the council? No? Okay. Is the applicant here? That's Ken. Would you like to say something? I don't see him.
Maybe something came up.
Okay. As a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Krista?
I move that the application for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Barrows Pizza located at 95 South Idaho Road be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor.
Okay, consideration for application for temporary extension on premises for the Fraternal Order of the Eagles. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This application is for a temporary extension of premises, which will allow them to sell alcohol in the area that they have designated where they'd like to extend their premises. It is strictly for an event, Western Days, on Saturday, February 20th. Just checking my notes here. The event is from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and currently, they have indicated that there will be no outdoor music at the time. All four entities have performed their safety and ADA inspections, and all of them are recommending approval. Again, the applicant was contacted this evening and said that they would be here.
Okay. Any discussion among the council? Seeing and hearing none, is the applicant here? William, would you like to come up and say something? Excuse me?
Your Honor and councilmembers, with Lost Dutchman Days being canceled this year, we wanted to do a little something because we've always given to the AJ youth as a charity. And this year, we want to do this so that we can raise a little bit of money for the AJ youth. That's why we have put this together for a little brat for AJU. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a temporary extension of premises submitted by the Fraternal Order of Police located at 2315 South Coconino Drive for Western Days to be held on February 20th be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes, and thank you for doing this.
Councilmember Biggs?
With the correction that it's the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, not the Fraternal Order of the Police, yes.
Yeah, I think.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. With the correction.
All right. Consider an application for temporary extension of premises for Captain's Food and Spirits. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This application this evening is the, it's falling under the Governor's Executive Order for the extension of premises for a lot of our restaurants in the area, in the community. Captain's has applied for the extension of premises until June 14th of this year. Gets them through the nicer months. All four entities did their inspection for safety and ADA compliance. There were only a few concerns addressed by the police department. Those consisted of the lighting on the building and the parking lot area, the safety barricade that is proposed to be used, which is that orange, I call it snownetting. It's that crisscross netting for the patron seating area and the potholes of the parking lot. Other than that, those issues, they really didn't have any other concerns. Mary LeBeau is present this evening to address those concerns. That's all I have.
Okay. Counsel, do they have anything for discussion right now?
I have a question, but I'll wait.
Same.
Okay. Applicant, Mary? Would you like to come up and to address the council, please?
Hi, I'm Mary Ledoux, Mayor, City Council. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Krista?
I think my question's more for staff. My question's more for staff.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Gail.
You had applied for this in December to have outside eating. Have you started that at all? Like, I drove by today and there wasn't any barriers or anything up.
No, I was waiting for the approval from the liquor board.
Oh, I see. Does, because your drawing is just a rough sketch drawing, does this comply with the distance necessary for the Governor's orders?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
It's just kind of hard to tell when it's.
I know. I did it myself.
Yeah, no, that's okay. However it gets done. And is the fencing going to start up at the, like, where the door is? Or is it just going to be the parking spaces?
It's going to be from the door, and then the entrance will... Do you have the drawing?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it's going to be, you're going to, we have to leave the sidewalk open.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. You were going to leave that open.
Yeah, we have to for the, go through. So, the entrance will be on the west side, so the end of the parking spots.
Have you had any conversations with the owner as far as is he okay with this? Since it's kind of, since it's a parking lot, it's his liability too, if someone calls.
Right. He doesn't, he has no concerns about it since our neighbors already have the tables out there.
The barrel tables, yeah.
Yeah, at the deli, so. Yeah, at the deli, so. And it's only, what, one and three-quarter parking spots?
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't tell that.
Yeah.
But, okay, thank you.
Mary?
For the police department's concerns in regards to some of the potholes in the parking lot, I'm not too sure off the top of my head if there are any in those parking spaces.
It's not too bad there. It's worse over where you come in off of 88 by the.
Right.
Medical. That's where, after the last storm, it changes. After the last storm, it's really bad coming in there. They've already redone a lot of the potholes around there, and hopefully, I don't know what he's doing, but hopefully, they'll do that area. But in that, right around there, they've done most of them. We have the speed bump, two speed bumps, one real close to where I'm talking about building, putting it out there, the extension.
So, there's no major concerns over people tripping or falling in a hole, and, at least in that area?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
No. And that's where we have all the events that you were talking about earlier, so.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
I have the two questions that the police, oh goodness, I just lost it. Okay, the recommendation from the police department was that decorated concrete barrier should be considered placing around the area because it's out in a parking lot? And the other, additional exterior lighting for that area? How have you addressed those two issues?
I'd be happy to find out about the concrete barrier. I don't think to the west, since the tables are already there at the deli, that's a concern. Oh, no, to the north, but the west side, I can find out what that concrete barrier would be to rent or lease or whatever you do. I would be more than happy to do that. The lighting, I got to talk to the owner of the mall because they're not coming on at the right time, and there are some bulbs that are out, and I can give him a call and talk to him. He's in New York, but, oh.
But these were, this is what the police were saying, that they had a concern about. It wasn't lighting that you already have. It says additional exterior lighting for this dedicated area. And the police statement says, additional exterior lighting for the dedicated area must occur. Have you put up, or are you going to put up additional lighting?
I don't think that, I would be more than happy to just have daytime going on. I can't imagine anybody being out there at night anyway. This time of year and into June, I don't think, this is a daytime when the sun is shining kind of a thing, and I can just have day only.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Krista.
Kelly, did you have any?
Kelly.
I do not. Okay. My question is for staff, so I'm not sure who's here from Development Services or...
Larry and Rudy are here.
They're over there.
Larry or chief?
Larry, so the, I'm not going to name it, but there's a restaurant next door that has outdoor seating for customers to eat, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and they've been doing that for how long, do you know?
At least four, maybe five years.
Yeah. And I, has there ever been an incident or an issue that you're aware of?
I don't know that they got a lot of use. I think when they first opened up, I think people sat out there, but I have not seen folks eat out there since it changed ownership.
Okay. But they're, I mean, they're doing it, they're legal, they're allowed to do it, and it's, I mean, it shouldn't really...
We did not really approve it or have a process. We, you know, now we do. It's over the counter, no fee to do this per the Governor's order.
Yeah.
So, we never gave permission, but I really didn't see them using it a lot either.
I mean, I've gone there and sat out there and eaten, so it's never really been an issue. I just, I guess I, I just want to make sure that they're not, that, you know, people understand this, this won't be the only place that has outdoor eating in that, in that area. Somebody's already doing it, it's been fine. To our knowledge, there's not been any issues, and so.
I think it's the alcohol piece that changes the complexion of the whole thing as well.
Right.
And Your Honor, this, this is, these are our recommendations for consideration for us to do our best, doesn't, this has nothing to do with the liquor license per se.
Yeah.
Anyone else want to say anything?
The only other question that I would have is because there's a sunset of 6:14, this actually, the paperwork says 6:14 of 20, so, I mean, I, yeah. Once we reach that deadline, though, should you want to reapply or need to reapply, what would, does that then need to come back in front of us, or can that go straight through you?
Actually, that agenda item is down under new business for an administrative policy.
Okay. Thank you.
No one else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Yes.
I'm Jeff Barlett. I'm over at 108 North Meridian Drive, apartment 220 in Apache Junction, Arizona. What I'd like to just say here is that I feel like that we need to be supporting our businesses during this pandemic, and a lot of businesses are dealing with excessive regulations that are hurting their business. And I've also seen that in other cities, they've been unfair with businesses where a large corporation doesn't have to comply with the same kind of regulations as a smaller company would, and things have been getting very unfair just in different areas. And today, before coming to this council meeting, I went to a fast food chain, and I've seen cars backed up in the street because they're closed for a dine-in, and you can't order, you have to go through drive, the drive-through, and that's causing issues with all the cars being backed up. I've seen that in another city, going to a fast food place, and then once they opened up for dine-in, you don't see that hazard of cars being backed up. And then, I feel like this situation has gotten way out of control because of all these excessive regulations, and I feel that a lot of these precautions, I think, should be someone's personal choice, like, especially when it comes to things like mask mandates and that. I think somebody should be able to choose if they wear that or not, and I don't think someone should be told on how they should be doing things there. And I feel that we need to be protecting our individual liberties and supporting our businesses, and thank you very much.
Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a temporary extension of premises submitted by Captain's Food and Spirits located at 300 West Apache Trail to serve alcohol in the non-contiguous licensed outdoor dining area as allowed under the Governor's Executive Order 20-60 until June 14th, 2021 until sunset be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Your Honor, I have a question before we proceed any further. Do we need, do we need to address the police issues? They've been stated. Do they need to be covered in any way? Is there any requirement that we answer those?
Joel.
Because they didn't give their approval.
First of all, I think you got a procedural thing. You have a motion, and it's been seconded, I think, so. But as to that, if you wanted to make an amendment to that, but I, I think the applicant answered the question on the lights.
Okay.
And I think the pothole issue was also covered pretty well.
Well, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking, do we need to put in here that we're approving it knowing that because the police, you know?
No, I think you're covered.
All right. That's just a question.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor.
Okay, items 12 and 13 are regarding the same property, so I will combine the public hearing, but each of them must have their own motion. Let's see, who's going to be addressing that?
Kelsey.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I am a planner here on staff, and tonight's presentation is a rezoning and preliminary plat request by Belle Flora Communities for a 96-lot residential subdivision. The property is located near the southeast corner of Superstition Boulevard and Ironwood Drive. It's located on five parcels and is approximately seven acres in size. The current zoning on the property is B1 General Commercial and RS20M Medium Density Single Family Detached Residential, and the request is to rezone the entire property to RM2PD, which is High Density Multiple Family Residential by Plan Development for a 96-lot residential townhouse subdivision. So, as you can see in the zoning map, this property is surrounded by both commercial and residential properties. To the north, we have single-family as well as an RV park. To the west, we have a gas station and single-family housing. To the east, single-family housing, and then to the south, single-family housing as well as an RV park. There's limited development history on this property. Past aerial photos indicate there might have been a home or two on this property at one point, but primarily, this has been an issue for our code enforcement officers recently. This property has a history of homeless encampments as well as illegal dumping. So, here's an overall view of the development as well as a preliminary landscape plan. It's kind of difficult to tell from this, but the homes along Superstition Boulevard and Gold Drive will actually face out onto the street to kind of create a more connected feeling and integrated feeling with the surrounding community. Amenities for this property will include a pool, jacuzzi, totlot, cabanas, as well as two dog parks. The mailboxes for this property will be located near the dog parks, kind of down in this area. And then, in terms of trash, each individual household will have their bin that they will take from, they will keep in their garage, take it out to the street, and then it will be picked up at that time and then put back until the next week. And then, I think it's important to note that these units are owner-occupied. This will be a subdivision, so these are not going to be rental apartments, these will be for ownership. So, the main entrance for this property is proposed along Ironwood Drive with an additional ingress egress on Gold. There will be view fencing along Ironwood Drive along with pedestrian gates so that people within the community can easily access those sidewalks. And then, all lighting within this community will meet dark-skies standards. It has been kind of a thing that the city has been trying to move towards, and we have let them know that in advance. So, here are the proposed elevations for the property. As you can see, the development is limited to two stories to kind of be cognizant of the neighborhood, and this includes multiple material types such as brick, stucco, siding, as well as some articulation along the roofline. And staff worked really closely with the developer and the applicant in the design review process to get to, you know, to get these elevations to this point. Here's the rear of the elevations. As you can see, the multiple material types are also on the rear to, you know, just create a nice-looking product from all sides. Each unit has two-car garages, and this is in addition to the 39 guest spaces that are placed around the subdivision. As I mentioned before, this is a planned development request, and this means that we will be, they're requesting deviations from the base RM2 zoning district. I'll briefly go over these. They're requesting a decreased lot width from 60 feet to 22. They're requesting decreased setbacks, a decreased landscape buffer from 10 feet to 8 feet, as well as decreased alley and street widths. All of these deviations have been reviewed by internal staff as well as the fire district, and the fire district's main comment had to do with the decrease in width on the private streets and alleyways, and all they request is that no sign, no parking signage is posted throughout the development so that those streetways are not blocked. In terms of public input, a sign was posted at the sign, notices were sent out to property owners within 300 feet, and it was advertised in the newspaper. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on December 15th, 2020 via Zoom. Staff has received some input regarding this rezoning. There was one call from a neighbor who wanted more information about water runoff, and we referred them to the project engineer for more information. Staff has also received three, I apologize, there's a typo in this, three letters regarding the rezoning request. One was included as a part of the attachments, and then two of them I placed at your seats prior to the meeting. Just to kind of give a brief overview of what was in those letters, one letter had concerns about increased traffic, construction noise, as well as construction along Ironwood Drive and blocking the views of the mountains. Another had concerns with height, density, traffic congestion, utilities, as well as safety. This individual was not opposed to the development of the site, they just thought that maybe this wasn't the best use. And then, the third letter also had very similar concerns, traffic, density, height, safety of the development, as well as whether or not the community would meet dark-skies standards. And I think it's also important to note that the owner of the RV park to the south is supportive of this development. She is currently in the process of redeveloping her site, so she's very supportive of this project and is excited to see a neighboring property develop and hopefully become a nice family community. So, staff recommends approval of PZ1020 and SD220, subject to the standard conditions of approval found in the staff report. There's one thing that I wanted to note which might have caused some confusion for you. There were two resolutions presented to you in the packets you received. They are completely identical with one exception, the one that was titled Developer Recommendation. There's an additional condition within this, and so the resolution approves the pre-plat. And basically, condition number nine is to allow an at-risk grading permit prior to the recordation of the final plat. This condition was discussed with staff, and staff is supportive of it, and the, you know, the requirements in order to get an at-risk grading permit. But we wanted to present you with both versions because this condition was not added until after the public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, we wanted to make sure you saw two versions and kind of make that distinction. So, I'd be happy to answer any initial questions. I just, you know, want to thank the developer and his team for working really well with staff to create this high-quality subdivision, and, you know, staff is supportive of this project, and we think it'd be really a nice addition to the community. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and has a presentation as well, but again, I'd be happy to answer any initial questions you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Your Honor, I have a quick question. Matt, could you put the, the last photo back up that she was talking about? Yeah, actually, no, the very last one that she had that said it was like number nine, that the change to the at-risk grading.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain to us a little bit more about what that means exactly?
So, typically, you get a grading permit once the final plat has been recorded, and so this is a way that, you know, this developer is excited to move forward and is getting all of his information as close to being ready as possible. And so, this is the city's way of saying that as long as you meet certain qualifications, then you can get your, an at-risk grading permit before your final plat is recorded for the subdivision. So, it just kind of helps the developer move things along a little faster, but at their own risk. So, everything that is typically required to be completed as a part of the final plat might not be completed yet.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else have any?
Yeah, I have.
Yes.
Several things, actually. Okay. Is there going to be any kind of cap on the number of rentals?
Not that I'm aware of. The developer in their HOA might have something, but not that I'm aware of.
Actually, you can't legally do that.
Well, I wasn't sure, but.
Yeah.
Because she had mentioned about, what did, what was it you said about?
Owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied.
Who will own their unit.
Okay. I'm just curious about the internal open spaces around this in the, because in our next hearing, they're required to have 25%. Is there, was there nothing put in here of how much open space that they are required to have?
We did not specify. I believe the 25% comes out of our landscape regulations, but the developer is, you know, providing the dog parks and several amenities, so it's just not specifically specified within the.
Because I was just curious why we're requiring the next people to have 25%, but this, to me, it doesn't look like it's 25%.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Can you tell me what the size of the pool is for?
That...
A whole bunch of people?
I am not aware of. The developer might have a better answer.
Okay. The sidewalk? The sidewalks. I had a real hard time trying to understand some of this. Because some of this, it looks like if you come out the back door where your garage is, you're walking right in the street. There is no sidewalks. Is that correct?
So back here is where the garages will be located, and I do not believe there are sidewalks. Sidewalks would be, you know, in the front of the unit, and then these are the fronts of the unit.
Now, when all of these people that live facing Ironwood and Superstition and Gold, when they come out their front doors, is there any sidewalks?
Um, yes, there is. There is, so...
Is it the street sidewalk that's already there?
So these are the street sidewalks right here. So they're going to kind of meander. And then, so these units, there will be kind of a front patio area and then access to the sidewalks.
Okay. And these little places in between, there will be sidewalks between these, the buildings?
I believe there will be some sort of access.
Okay. Like over here where, what are these numbers up at the very top on Superstition? 32 and 33, in between those two, there, is there going to be sidewalks in there?
So there will be. So there will be view fencing and a gate here that, you know, so if you're visiting these individuals, you can park right here in the guest parking, walk right through here and get to the front door.
Now, it said somewhere that there's going to, between these buildings is four feet. Is that what I read?
Between...
I don't know where it was now.
So these are, these are attached units.
No, no, no. In between the two, the buildings themselves, not the ones that are attached.
Oh, between here?
Like between 32 and 33, using that again. Is that four feet?
Um, I am not...
Space?
I am not aware of the exact dimension of that.
Because I, I was wondering if it was on each side of a sidewalk is four feet, because I think I read in the, my computer, I let it go off. Sorry.
The developer will be able to answer.
Councilmember Nester, Mr. Mayor, I think the developer could probably answer these questions really easy if...
Okay.
So it's suggesting maybe to have him go through his presentation and some of these real specific questions. I think he could answer right off the top of his head.
Okay. I won't ask another one of them.
If that's the council's wishes.
Couple of questions, but I'll ask the developer first.
Developer, okay.
Okay.
All right. Is the applicant here? We'd like to, we'd like to have you come forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Wilson, Vice Mayor Rizzi, members of the council. My name is Reese Anderson, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Pue and Lake, and my address, for your record, is 1744 South Val Vista. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm excited to see airplanes, which are one of my favorite things, and celebrate 20-year anniversaries. So congratulations. We've worked with Mr. Powell over the years, our firm, and so I hope he doesn't mind a little teasing, but what a, what a great milestone. Also with me this evening is Mr. Hud Hassel, the president of Bella Floor Communities. That was the gentleman sitting on my left, and both of us are able to answer any questions that you might have. Kelsey gave a great presentation, and you have a long agenda, so I'd rather focus on questions that you have, because we're with you tonight with full recommendation of approval from your staff.
Yeah.
As well as a unanimous vote from the PNZ. And so I'd rather spend our time focusing on questions that you have. For example, Councilmember Nester asked about four feet. Well, the sidewalk's four feet, but the space there is somewhere between 15 and 20. The pool is about 30,000 gallons. That's a nice-sized pool. So those were a couple of questions that I thought I heard, and I probably missed one. But if you'll remind me, I'd be happy to answer them. And I do have a presentation, but I'm happy to share it. I really think we'd be better served by just answering some questions.
Let's start with Tess.
What size is that pool? I don't know what 30,000 gallons is.
Well, I have to look carefully at it, but I think, look, judging it, here, let me try and scale it out if we could.
You wonder how much?
On the actual, you're asking for, what is the actual square feet, like if I were to walk around it?
Yeah.
And I'm going to ask if Mr. Hassel knows, he may come up and join me. I always like to...
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nester, I think a typical residential backyard pool, probably about 10,000 gallons, so that's what I'm thinking of as kind of round typical, but...
We're talking about how many units and how many people?
So, through the mayor, Councilmember Nester, these are 96 units.
Right, so 200 people?
200 people, yeah. And if, if maybe you have in your lifetime, I remember especially as I, I like to call it, as I was younger, I lived in apartment complexes. I lived in the condominium complexes, and I didn't see a lot of pressure on the pool. There is. I think you can hear from Mr. Hassel and others that it's a very nice amenity. It's great to go over on a hot day, but there's plenty of space there. In addition to that, there's the jacuzzi, which I think those get used quite a bit too, but at nighttime, not so much during the day. But I think this is a well-sided pool, well-placed, is also well-sized and appropriately sized. Again, we could ask Mr. Hassel to give you some of his experience on other developments with the pools that they have and how many people they see coming and going, but I think they've done a great job on this one.
The only other thing that I, and I can't find where I wrote it down now, there's a discrepancy from what I was reading with the city saying that there needs to be put in the CCNRs, that there will be no parking by anyone on the streets, because you want narrower streets.
You're absolutely right. So not only does that, will that appear in the project itself with signage as required there in the stipulation of the case, but we also place that in the CCNRs so that we have a private right of enforcement. And while nobody likes to be heavy-handed in those situations, right? If you need it, you need that tool in your CCNRs so that you can appropriately enforce it. And it behooves the HOA to do that, and it, because it makes it a better project for everyone. But as you can see, we have well over what's required by the code, and there's 39 extra guest spaces around the site.
That's all I have right now that I can find.
Yes, Your Honor. I have some questions. Number one about, are you going to do any type of deceleration lane, or what's, how are we going to flow that traffic there on Ironwood?
Yep. Great question. Thank you, Councilman. So right now, the traffic engineers are telling us it's not necessary to have a deceleration lane on Ironwood, and so one's just not shown. If that continues to be an issue, we'll work with the staff in Apache Junction to solve that during the construction process. But so far, we have been asked to install a decel lane there, because while it may sound like there's a lot of traffic, it doesn't rise to the level that one's required.
Okay. And while I understand that's probably maybe not the case right now, my concern is future and future growth and, because the way Ironwood is set up right now, you know, it's five lanes, so you've got two lanes going south, you've got a center lane, and then you've got one lane going north, and then the next lane is a right turn onto Superstition. So I just see a lot of problems in terms of congestion and in terms of if, if we do continue to grow, and I don't know, I did talk with Bryant and Matt a little bit about growth possibly to the north there on Ironwood, and maybe there won't be a lot, I don't know, but I do travel that area quite frequently, and it's already hectic. So I'm just afraid that if we go ahead and move forward with this type of large complex with that many people driving, that we're not planning ahead for the future and that this is going to even cause more congestion right there. Also, I have some concerns too about the water runoff. Can you go into a little bit about, because I know there's been some concerns from neighbors, and I see that there is a huge area where it looks like there is water runoff through there, so what's the plan there?
Could I, if I could, I'm going to try to understand your question a little bit better.
Okay.
Because, and one neighbor expressed concern about water runoff, but I think it was just one where education solved the concern. So there is off-site stormwater that flows through this site, and in my simple understanding of the rules of off-site stormwater, it is, you, you take it at point A, you don't change the volume, and it exits at point B. But between A and B, I can do with it what I want, so long as I, you know, don't make it worse. I also have to take the rainwater that falls on my site and then store that on my site. So what I'm doing by that is I'm reducing downstream flows. That's my oversimplification of that. That's exactly what's happening here. We're taking the onsite flows up there in the northeast corner, they're flowing through the site and then exiting in the southwest corner. We're also keeping onsite stormwater that's there, and we meet, we meet your code, we follow all the rules, and we're not making the problem worse, we're making it better. That's the easiest explanation I could give you.
Reese, am I correct that that's now just going to be underground?
Yes. So if we were to look at the site plan and either, if I can control it, here, there's the, someone's magic, thank you. So let's just, there on your screen, we'll start in the upper right corner, and it's coming under that street that's on, just separated over from Gold. It's coming underground there, making the corner, it's going to be coverted under the street, very common practice, and then comes back down, it exits in that southwest corner. Again, you get oversimplifying, but point A where you take it, point B where it leaves, can't increase the volume, and in theory, really, we're reducing it because we're keeping the rainwater on our site. Some of you may have gone by in the last few days and seen that Mr. Hassel's cleaned up that site and received some good compliments. I appreciate them doing that, as it's, I've heard, it's quite an eyesore for many years, and so...
Well, it's a co-compliance case. We spend significant tax dollars dealing with, and we have over the years, cleaning up that property. We had over four homeless camps in there at the time, and I don't want to get into details of all that was there.
So we've owned, Mr. Hassel's owned that property for a few months now and going through this, and so after we closed, we were working on that. So, Councilmember Gurnell, did I answer your question adequately?
You did, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't have questions. I have comments for discussion.
More discussion than a question.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
I have several questions, so go ahead.
I have a concern that this is Apache Junction, and we like our pickup trucks. And pickup trucks are special ordered if you only get a two-door anymore. So they're all four-door. They're typically 21 feet long. The garages from the schematic that I was reading were only 21 feet deep. Is the additional 39 guest spaces, are they, there was no dimension for those. Are they long enough to hold that, that they're not going to be sticking out into the private streets? I mean, that's a big concern for me, because we have a couple of these other developments that have this situation where you have to park in your garage, and they end up parking along outside the subdivision along the road because they don't fit. And I couldn't see any dimensions or anything that would alleviate my concern, that A, they're not going to fit in the existing garages, even with the bump out, the bump, curb bumps.
Yeah. I'm looking now to see if I can also find it. I do know that the parking spaces that are there are not compact. They are normal, typical sizes required by the city code. So I would presume they're sufficient enough to park a truck of regular, I know exactly what you're saying. I own a truck. And so I'm just looking at this, trying to get a feel for how deep those parking spaces are.
And it's a concern.
It is, it is, no, you're absolutely right.
Because the roads are so narrow and swing in a truck, because some of them have better turning radiuses than others to even get them into the garage, so that we immediately have a truck that's always going to be taking up one of those guest spots.
It could be. There's no doubt. I would say that the developer's demographic target is not the typical person that has the truck.
Well, and I understand that piece of it, too.
But we can't, I can't control who...
Right.
Usually horsey people.
But, you know, you always get those work trucks.
Yep.
And I don't want Gold being lined with work trucks.
Right. Absolutely. So what we, what we do there, do the same, is we require folks through the CCNRs to park onsite, to stay off of Gold.
And will you have notification to buyers of the length of the garage and...
Absolutely.
And to, I don't know if we wanted to go as far as to have no parking along Gold so that we don't change that, the dynamics of that neighborhood, that's not, we don't want to infringe on anybody else.
And part of the public process allows for this interaction, and this is not even the preliminary plot yet, right?
Right.
So this is the zoning part. So this will give, you know, some great feedback for the developer to kind of work through some of the...
So that is just my only concern. I think it's a really nice project. I think it will add to the area tremendously. I just know when we get into congestion, we get into other issues that need to be solved now, not later.
Thank you for the feedback. Very noted. Brandon?
Yeah, so one of the things that I'm noting is the 7.8 feet from the front of the patio to the property line along Gold Drive. So I understand that the homes along Superstition and then along Gold are reverse-facing from the rest of the property so that your front, that the front of the townhouse will be facing the road. So now, it looks like everybody else in the complex has, I guess, what would be a backyard or back patio. So am I correct to then assume that they, that these 30-some-odd homes would have front yards then?
So, Councilmember Biggs, I think I can answer the question, which is, no one here really has a backyard. That's where the garage is.
Okay.
So you have, each of those where you see green space internal is really a front yard with sidewalks flowing through there, interconnecting...
Got it.
The entire, and then remember too, that the 7.8 feet that you see there is the worst-case scenario to the front corner of a patio area. It's not to the livable space of the home, which is back even further. It's just that, following the rules, we have to list what that shortest dimension is.
Right.
So there's a lot of undulation, there's a lot of movement there, and you probably got that, but I just wanted to make sure we were all clear.
Yep. Nope, that makes sense. And then around the exterior, there will be a fence, so even though that those 30-some-odd units are essentially able to be walked up to from the street, you still have to go through some form of exterior community fencing?
Not on Superstition and not on Gold. What you, that front, it really is the front of the townhomes, including their front porch, which is a low wall. I'm excited about it, because most of the time you see people turning their back to it, and this really engages the street and makes it feel a little more homely, for lack of a better, friendly. So you don't have two barriers that you have to get through, you just have the low wall to get to the front door of the home. So if you live there and I wanted to visit, I could walk up that front sidewalk and just go right to your front door. Does that answer the question?
It does. I guess that there's, to me, a security factor there, then with those 30-some-odd homes, is they're more at risk to be potentially broken into or be knocked on by a person running for office, or, you know, those pesky politicians.
Heaven forbid. You're absolutely right. This is the trade-off we have at every type of design, right? And so with it, we have to ask ourselves, do I want a 10-foot solid wall? I say that to exaggerate, to make a point, versus one where we have the front of the house there and the aesthetic is different.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so I recognize, but I also think that the trade-off is worth it in the long-term scheme of things.
So then, is there gating between each one of those buildings? So between like space, building 26 and 27, 32, 33, so...
Yes, sir.
Inside is secure essentially?
Yes, sir. So let's assume that you and I were walking down the street on Superstition, and I wanted to come into the project because I live somewhere in the middle. We would come through that gate where that sidewalk is and then down in.
Okay. And then, from what I'm seeing, you guys are requesting a building height of 40 feet, which I understand is the same as the current RM2 development standards.
I'm sorry, did you say 40?
I see 40, yes.
That's what it says.
The proposed development standards say 40, and the current RM2 development standards are 40.
So that, in that instance, it's just recognizing what the baseline is. We're not asked, the buildings are nowhere near 40.
What, how tall are the buildings?
28.
Okay.
Highest point, 26.
There's been significant concern over loss, well, concern at least, over loss of views of the mountain. of views of, of the mountain and that's one of those concerns and I understand that, so.
Yes, and I, if you'd like, I'm happy to show you some little analysis, but it's up to you.
Did you guys, I briefly watched the planning and zoning meeting. I think you guys covered that, but if you could at least cover that again for the community to understand.
My presentation's up. I think it's near the end. There's a few pictures there.
I think you guys did a view shed, if I remember.
We, we did. And so these are the building elevations, but we'll keep going. And actually, yep, keep going.
Oh, keep going?
Yep, keep going. Okay, stop, right there. Go back one. So a neighbor directly across the street, which Jennifer and Andy attended our neighborhood meeting. And I, I could read you the email from them if you'd like, but they're working on developing their property and they want us to buy their property. But she said to us, I want to protect my view of Superstition Mountain. Now, all of us understand the principle, which is views are not legally protected, but we do what we can where we can. So I, I, using Google Street View, we went and said, this is the front door of Andy and Jennifer's home. And we said, let's look due east. Well, you can see Superstition Mountain there. And so if you go to the next slide, we just tried to draw a red line from a single-story home, which I'm predicting is about 16 feet. I didn't go measure it, but just based on my experience, that age of that home, I think it's probably about 16 feet to the peak. I drew a line over. My point is, any single-story house that goes there affects our view. So now let's go to the next slide, if you would please. Now we took our elevations and we said, you, you are luck though because you're directly across from the entrance. And so no building will be there to block that view anyhow. So that's the analysis we did. And I'm not sure if it completely satisfied her, but I think it's a fair analysis of the issue.
That's something that comes up anytime you have vacant property, whether it's going to be commercial, something is going to be built on that property and somebody's going to be unhappy. Unfortunately, it's just one of those things we deal with on a regular basis. Many of us have been there, done that, had our view obstructed and it's just part of growth. You can't not grow. So it's, you know, we, like you said, you try to mitigate it the best you can. Nobody wants to block anybody's views, but at some point, it's, it's growing pains, it's part of.
And then I just have two more questions, but one of those in regards to the dog park. I, I love it. I think it's great, but also the community's building a dog park that we're hoping to open in 2022.
Is this the one on the?
Idaho and Superstition right across the street, basically. I understand, especially with your guys' communities, that it's something that is a great amenity, but I would maybe ask that you look at maybe offering something else because we're spending a lot of money to put something in that I think is going to be a really great asset to the community and want the community to use.
Fair enough. This is a dog park solely for the residents here.
Okay.
So I don't think it would compete at all with what you're doing on that one. Although we're excited to come back in a few months and talk to you about a project that's not on your agenda, but will be seen. And I don't want to cross any lines, but I'm excited to talk to you about it in a few months.
And, and then?
And it'll be right near the park you mentioned.
Awesome. And then I do agree with Councilwoman Evans mentioned earlier about potentially no parking on Gold. I do see that as a big concern, especially if the, if that entrance or exit rather is going to be a secondary access in those homes there. I think we can't allow any parking in that area. It's going to get really congested and that's just not built for that. But then my last question, and I don't, I think this is more or less just for staff, is in regards to the trash service. Does this fall, does this development fall under Republic Services or?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I thought it didn't.
That's it.
I'm, I'm just waiting for a discussion.
I have one question and I wanted to address is, is you going to be making improvements on the section of Gold that's going to be alongside the, the area?
Yes, sir. The answer is absolutely yes. So whatever's necessary to complete that full street section, we will do as part of our improvements and we'll do that immediately as part of Phase One.
Okay.
Your Honor, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Sorry. The fact that Council, Councilmember Biggs brought up the issue about the, the homes facing Superstition and that it's basically going to be open, which I, I guess I didn't really understand that necessarily. So I guess my question is, why, why are we doing a gated community? I mean, what, you know, why is it a key card to get in if it's kind of already open anyway? What, what's the thought process there?
I'm happy to share thoughts. Do you want to do it or you want me? You go ahead. You, you would want to hear from the?
You have to.
Absolutely.
Mr. Anderson does a great job preparing for these events. You guys have asked great questions tonight. I do want to answer one of the most important questions tonight regarding trucks. So if I can go circle back to round to that. With regards to this particular subdivision, the way we've done it in the past is just how we see normal subdivisions. The houses turn their backs straight and we throw up a big huge block wall. We could do that here if you'd like. This is an area where we've got an opportunity to go a little bit more dense and follow the general plan. The new general plan is calling for density in certain areas in the right places and in the right way. This is a perfect example of taking those homes and facing them forward and creating more of a downtown environment. So when you put the doors to the front, when you put the patios and a locking gate to the front, easy for politicians to still hop over and knock on the door and solicit for votes for sure. But it, it creates a little bit more of a friendly welcoming atmosphere, as Mr. Anderson pointed out, as I think, as I think we're seeing.
I'm not sure that answers my question.
So the question was, why not gate the whole thing?
No, 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 no.
It's, in my thoughts, right, it's still secure because the front of the home is locked. There are gates spanning every opening there or a view fence. And?
It is still entirely gated. So for, for example, if, if I were to go between the two buildings where we talked about the sidewalk, for example, the width of the sidewalk, the distance between the buildings between 15 to 20 feet, that's a gated area. So to access that gate, you'd have to punch in the code and get through the gate or flash your fob. So it is still considered a gated community with the exception of the 30-plus units that are directly out there. And those guys would have their patios and their front doors directly accessible to Gold as well as Superstition.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the pickup trucks, if I may, sir.
Yes.
I picked my absolute favorite truck, which is a Raptor. Mr. Anderson has one of, one of the trucks that we all aspire to. We can't build a subdivision for every single truck, but we try to include all trucks. We don't want to be discriminating against trucks. We should note that some of the largest trucks that any of us could ever drive will be able to circulate and navigate in here, trash trucks, fire trucks. So if I can get a pickup truck to work, I can get the big trucks to work as well. So on a Ford F-150 Raptor with a six and a half foot box, you're talking about a wheelbase plus box, 209, 209 inches, which is right around 17 feet. If I go to an eight-foot box, I'm just under 19 feet, right? So the length is important. The width is just as important, right? If we throw in the mirrors, we're talking about an eight-foot wide truck, mirror to mirror. These garages are 22 feet wide in addition to the 21 feet deep. So it's not just length, it's also the width. We're truck-friendly. I, I would hate for this to go on TV and someone think we're not truck-friendly. So thank you, sir, for the opportunity to respond to trucks.
Thank you. We've probably taken too much of your time, but we'll stay here as long as you need.
I didn't think you were unfriendly.
We didn't need to imply that at all. It's a fair analogy.
I needed to clarify, Your Honor, this is preliminary as well. So they're both items. So I was incorrect on that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comments from council?
Was it a public hearing? Are we opening up for the?
Yes, it's open to the public hearing.
I'll wait till hearing from the public.
I'll take my seat, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing and those that'd like to speak on number 12, which is ordinance number 1500, which is the rezoning of.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, number 12 and 13, we can have the public hearing at the same time.
Oh, okay, that's right. I'm sorry.
So do I get to talk or no? Okay. I was just wondering. Oh, sorry, Donna Carr. I am Apache Junction resident.
Your ad.
Address?
I went through this with the last mayor as far as giving my address out because I had somebody approach me afterwards saying they knew exactly where I lived. So I just say I'm an Apache Junction resident. Anyway, as far as the trucks go is, I know he was talking about the length of the garage. What's the driveway that's in front of the garage? What's the length of that? And if the length is too short, one, to handle a truck without taking into consideration a sidewalk, because I know I have a neighbor who, they can't even park in their driveway. They have to put it in the garage because I think they got something like maybe 10 feet to eight feet. They can pull in turn in order to park in their driveway, but having big trucks also comes with trailer hitches. So just bringing up that. And the other thing that I wanted to ask is, is in the area, I know he said that the pipes are going to be underneath the ground for running off the water from the area, but what about the city? Does the city have proper sewage drainage in that area for water runoff, to be able to handle the water runoff? Because I know I got people in my area also that have this habit of adding more dirt, adding more dirt. Next thing you know is they changed the direction of the natural water flow and now it comes through my yard and they're slowly becoming a wash through my yard that was never there before. I've lived there for 25 years. So just take into consideration to make sure there's proper drainage by the city as well to handle the water runoff.
Anyone else?
Some of you know I, you probably got your email. My name is Terry Kreidler and I live at 489 North Gold Drive in Apache Junction. I live in the middle of North Gold. So I, I have a lot of concerns. I listened to the whole entire presentation from the planning and zoning and I have a lot of concerns, especially with Mr. Hassel. But first, let's start with what the word primary means. It's an adjective meaning first, chief or principal, the first in an order of sequence. Main, main means principal, chief or predominant. Secondary is also an adjective, meaning next, after the first in order pertaining to a second order, stage or use. The reason why these definitions are important is because during the presentation by both the city planner and the attorney, Mr. Gillespie, said and were emphatic that the main or primary entrance would be on North Ironwood. However, Mr. Hassel got up and said that all residents would be using North Gold as their primary entrance and exit. That therein changes the whole scope of that planned development. Now you have residents coming in and out on a pretty much undeveloped road because it's all just asphalt. There are no sidewalks, there are no lane markers, there's no lights. What are you going to do about the whole road? That's very misleading and it's not the only misleading thing that, that they had to say. The city planner and the attorney, Mr. Gillespie, both stated that the parking spots are above and beyond those that are required and they include the extra guest parking. But Mr. Hassel got up and said that they would be encouraging people to park on North Gold so that they could visit their people right there at the gates. They can just park on North Gold and we'll just go into their house. That's not going to work. Why was this project fast-tracked? Why was it fast-tracked? Mr., Commissioner Jesse Gage stated during the planning and zoning that this project only meets approximately one-third of city code. Why is that? Also stated that there were trade-offs made. What are the trade-offs? Was one of those trade-offs fixing North Gold? During the planning and zoning meeting, the attorney stated that on average, one car per unit, this is just an average thing, one car per unit would make six or seven trips in and out of that property. According to Mr. Hassel, it'll be on North Gold. That, that comes to about 576 trips a day just for one car, going in and out on North Gold. Or for, not for one car, for the whole complex. So 96 times, at six times per is 576 encounters with a vehicle in and out of the property on North Gold. That doesn't include any of the deliveries, any workers who come to work on the property, garbage, the postal, et cetera. On that traffic note, I pulled the calls for service from the AJPD from January 2019 to December 2020. There are over 50 accidents between Ironwood and Apache Trail, Superstition and Valley with one fatality and there's an accident out there tonight. I'm not going to get to everything that I wanted to say, but I am opposed to this because of the fact that it should remain medium density and commercial. We are losing our commercial property. Every, there's more items on here tonight, getting rid of more commercial property. Where are our businesses supposed to be that these people are supposed to work for? I mean, we're, we're building houses for what? To be a bedroom community for the rest of the valley? How's that going to pay our, our fees for the city? So I sent all of this to you guys and I'm sure some of you read it, some of you probably didn't, but I hope that you'll take at least some of these things into consideration.
You're taking away my HOA. I've had the pleasure of camping out there a couple of times. Hey, we're moving up in the world, okay. I'm Republican, I'm business. Wow. I'm worried about my neighborhood because it's probably coming down the line where my five, six streets are now going to be looked at as a high-density development. HOA minimum for the community, maximum for the owner. And everyone had great questions. Is he going to have to raise the dirt to accommodate his drainage, which raises those buildings even more, which even gets less of our view? The driveways are not long enough for two cars and the demographics are not for single white HOA people with money. It's the wrong demographic, demographic for this area. To the south is the greatest source of drug addicts, homeless idiots that we have in Apache Junction. Make no mistake about it, like the last lady just said, for, I've been here a long time, has always been a source of drugs and homeless people. You asked the question, why? That's why. I'm not opposed to development, but I think this is the wrong deal for now and for that area. We're trying to stay flat. Grow, yes. Flat, yes. Not multi-purple polka dotted winter visitors, who is the demographics for this person? Who's going to buy into these condominiums? Those are demographics. I used to live in Quail Creek, had my own condominium prior to urban camping. So anyway, I've seen a lot of stuff go on here. This gentleman is coming in and he's pitching to the city, yeah, we're going to develop your city. Yeah, we're going to bring in the snowbirds, we've got the money, but we're also going to give you HOAs. This is the very essence of what we don't want at a city, as Apache Junction. We don't want to go there. I don't care how much money they're offering. It's not worth it. Facetum at any price is done. Now, we need to slow down lanes on Gold if it goes through. We need to slow down lanes on Ironwood if it goes through. Ironwood doesn't have the volume yet, but it will. But that's not the problem. I see Mr. Gabriel out there, the happiest lark, stopping the speeders every day. He's just happy to do it. This is the problem. Speeders slowing down and rear-ending these people on Ironwood. Speeders slowing down and rear-ending these people on Ironwood going into this new, not very well thought-out planned community. So, I hope you take all your questions that you had and, as he said, it's initial, but all of these are absolutely essential questions moving forward. And if they don't comply with what you want, mix it. Just say no. Like drugs, just say no. See, our city can't do that. Because in all your wisdom, you don't get to say no. But we're still here. Forty years I've been here. We have a DEA Chief of Police. We still got as much drugs as we did 20 years ago. And no, Larry, I'm not crazy. So, this is a deal that we really need to be looked at. If it doesn't fit what you want, what we want, not they want, say no. Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, Your Honor, Mayor. My name is Deanna Hennessy. My family, when I stand up here, I represent four family members on about three acres of land south of the project. So, I'm in the same area on Gold Drive. I took everything in consideration, water, traffic, all those things. Keep in mind, my family lived here for 15 years and they own a mobile park south, next door. And they've dealt with the homeless coming through there. And mind you, my mom and my dad live there too. I'm sorry, I just, trying to breathe in this map.
You can take it down. You don't have to wear that.
Oh, okay, okay. I don't know, he was, you were kind of coughing up here, but, I'm just saying. Anyway, I actually took the time, this is my family, they lived in this property for over 15 years. My dad's retired military. And I sat down with Mr. Hassel because obviously it's a concern and I have generations of family that will be living on that street that will not be selling, you know what I mean? And I asked about the water flow. We went through a map to show how much it would help from that area to be less water flowing through the property. We talked about that. That's already been addressed and I'm only going to tell you based upon experience, which I think is facts. So, and I appreciate my neighbor there being passionate of what she sees. But, I mean, if we're more concerned of traffic than we are about the community and where it is and all the people going through there and what I've seen, what my family's seen for 15 years. And we're on three acres, three acres. I represent four family members that's lived there for 15 years. So, he, Mr. Hassel said, there are two entrances, one on Gold, which where I live, you know, where my family lives, and one on Ironwood. Okay? Two entrances. Let's see, what else did I put in here? Oh, trucks. I've been to homes in AJ personally where my friends duly couldn't even fit in his driveway. A home, not a townhome, you know, it still couldn't fit. And I have a Hummer, a Jeep, I have trucks, just the same. What else did I see here? Just took a lot of, oh, and so my neighbor, who I appreciate that she came up here to share her thoughts, she had a concern about commercial business and how we support our community. I appreciate that and I will, I'm all for that, but without people to fill up or at least try to attempt to fill up the community, how are these businesses going to be put up? I have to take that in consideration as well. This is, this property is going to be where my family is going to live. I took the time to sit with the developer. He's done everything he said he was going to do and it's already been cleaned up. They took down this house with, I want to say furniture. Okay? So, they did it, they did it quick, they didn't waste time. And I'm doing the same thing, I'm having it cleaned up just as, just as fast as I can for my family, so they can live in a nice neighborhood. You know, we're trying, we want Apache Junction residents to live here who's been native here, but we also want to attract good people and this is homeownership. And with my experience, my family's experience, it's been hard to, our, our, our mobile homes fill up fast. So, these homes are needed. And that's, oh, did it, just, am I? Oh, okay.
Till it's red.
I'm done. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for listening.
My name is John Salak, I live at 2320 West 10th Avenue in Apache Junction. First of all, congratulations, Mayor Wilson and new council members. It's good to see this vacant lot that's been an eyesore for how many years? Garbage and, you've been here, you know what I'm talking about. It's nice to see this development. The only thing is, man, it's awful tight. It's awful tight. I mean, most of you have been to my townhouse, there's 30 homes on five acres. Five acres. My, the inside of my house, not including my garage, is bigger than their lot size. I mean, that's really tight. But what really bothers me is the D cell lane. I mean, you can't look at the traffic now, you've got to look at the traffic 10 years from now. Let's face it, you've got three major arteries going north and south, Idaho, Meridian part of ours and Ironwood.
Yep.
That street's going to be congested, the accidents, God knows what. I said, the development's nice, just a little tight, but man, get that D cell lane in. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on these two items.
Your Honor.
Further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
In looking at this, this, I do think this is a nice development. I think it's, I think not everybody wants a big yard. I'm not really concerned about the driveways and the garage and the trucks. I'm concerned about the traffic, for sure. My bigger concern is taking up what little bit of commercial property we have in this community and we're, we're losing our business opportunities. We have growth coming to the south, there's going to be some huge developments, housing developments. And if we don't provide the businesses up here, where are they going to go? They're going to go to our neighbor, they're going to go south, they're going to go, they'll go west, they'll go, I mean, my concern is really just taking these, this is a prime commercial property. We need to hold out. We need to hold out, in my opinion. And we need, we need businesses unless, one of the things that people don't understand is how the city gets its revenue. We get our revenue from sales tax. We don't have a property tax here. And so, yeah, we can put more houses, but it's not, that's not bringing, that's not bringing the revenue. I, I'm very concerned about taking a prime corner, a commercial lot, and I, you know, I hate, I'm sorry to the developer, but I'm not in support of it. Not, not this location, I just, I just can't support it. It, we've, we've got to, we've got to start filling in with businesses and commercial and that means holding out unfortunately and sometimes having the courage to say no.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, Vice Mayor Rizzi and I kind of think alike on this matter. So, if you look down Superstition and Nockatil area, there's some building going on, some groundbreaking. You have Lennar Homes on Goldfield, you have the Cortez Kaufman Homes, not to mention the financial investment Horton put in south of baseline. So, within the next decade, we're slated for 1,000 homes. And I'm having trouble seeing the balance in growth between residential and commercial. And not only does this go against our general plan by turning this over to residential, it's hurting our balance and growth. Someone had mentioned that, you know, sleeper town, you know, we're just, we're offering a place to sleep and if you want to go work or go somewhere to spend your money, go ahead and leave town. So, with that, I do agree with Vice Mayor Rizzi that this, this is just not a great place for this to happen because we can't keep, keep taking away our commercial property. In fact, the next item is a very similar item. I have a different view on it, but again, it's, it seems that over the last, you know, couple of years, agenda item after agenda item, I'm seeing homes, homes, homes and not businesses, businesses, businesses. So, there has to come a time where we need to say, hey, you know, let's, let's see what happens in the future.
Yeah. I think it's a great development. I just think it's not the right, not the right location.
It's beautiful. Perfect deal is right on, it's spot on, no question.
Would love to see it just in a different location, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
I understand what you're saying, but without the rooftops, we're not going to have businesses.
Like I said, 1,000 to be slated in 10 years.
We're going to get the rooftops, we're getting them.
We're, we're getting them, but that whole Superstition Boulevard along there has only small marginal businesses. It's not a big growth corridor for businesses. That's Apache Trail, that's Old West Highway, it's not in this location. And we even approved another project, I don't know how to say this other than kitty corner, that's going to be rentals. It's a good residential area. We have the secondary businesses like the gas station, we have a small carpet business, we have the liquor store and it's marginal. They built, it was before Mountain Health and Wellness was built on Meridian and Superstition, a big strip plaza. It's on the west side of Meridian. It's still vacant. It's just not the busy corridor for the big business that we want along the trail and along Old West Highway. I think it'll be a really nice complement to the area that's there. I like the fact that the units will face the streets instead of everyone driving by looking at another block wall. Has a little bit of landscaping around it. This is a more friendly-looking area. It's just not our big commercial where we want the businesses. It's, it's a secondary business street, but it's not our primary.
Your Honor? I agree and the, the next agenda item I have opposing views on for various reasons, but I just went and took a look at the GIS map and along those businesses on Superstition. There are 40 zones, 40 business zones along Superstition between Meridian and Idaho. Superstition is not a major commercial zone, job hub. That's Apache Trail, Old West Highway. I agree, I think, you know, discussions in our general plan, one of the community members addressed, you know, there's, there's talk of turning Superstition from a four-lane road to a two-lane road. I, I mean, granted, that's talk and that's in the general plan and I don't want to see that happen, but that should go to show how, I, how little business traffic is actually on Superstition. I think this is a great development. We talk often about housing diversity and trying to get new opportunities for housing in the community. I have concerns over specific issues with the community, but I think overall, I don't like seeing business zones go away and us trading them for residential. I understand that concern, but in this instance, I do understand it. I, I mean, I do agree with the community members who have addressed, addressed concerns over the D cell lanes and things like that. I've lived here for 26 years and in fact, my family was the prior owners of the trailer park that the lady in the audience owns currently. I know Gold very well, I grew up on that street. So, I've never seen this, this land ever look at being developed. I don't think it's ever been looked at. That's one of my questions for staff. Is have we, you know, what is the interest even in this, in this lot for businesses? But right now, I think it's a fair trade for what we're looking at doing.
Your Honor, this is Matt. Could we invite planning staff, I don't know if Kelsey or Larry?
Yep.
And, and address two items, how this fits into the general plan? And what would you say about our commercial zoning, the amount of it we have in the city? And to Councilmember Biggs's point, this area? And then Bryant, I think one more.
And I was just going to have Emile come up and talk a little bit about the D cell lane and his perspective on it. He's a city engineer.
As far as the, I believe the same, same family has owned this for about 40 years. It is zoned a combination of B3 and residential. Since I've been here, really only proposals we've seen are for residential, not for commercial projects. So, I know my predecessor, we keep going back to this, did a, basically a GIS analysis of the city. We had about 3,000, 3 million square feet zoned commercial throughout the city and the population just doesn't support 3 million square feet of land zoned commercial. Now, the 28 acres that was on Lennar, that obviously reduced some. We've done some other rezonings, but I guess I would say that this corridor, as others have said, is not really the primary commercial core. And the city always holds out for commercial if we can because of the retail sales tax, but we also get sales tax from rental property and a few other things. So, I think that answers that question. I know there were some other items that came up, just quickly. There was a suggestion that this was fast-tracked. This is not fast-tracked, this went through the Planning Commission, it went through the council. Developers can submit a rezoning and a preliminary plat at the same time, it's, we do it all the time. It's really up to the developer. Again, I think in the case of Lennar, they came and got the rezoning first, then came back with the preliminary plat. U-Haul did theirs simultaneously, so it's, that's not unusual per se. And then the question about deviations, why are there so many deviations? This did come up at Plan Commission and that was really answered in that the city for a townhouse, townhome type project, product, we don't have a zoning district where this neatly, neatly fits. So, you, we don't have an RS2 zoning, we have an RS5, which is a 5,000 square foot lot. So, you could perhaps say RS5 PD because it's still a single family, it's still owner-occupied, it's still a plat, but it's the, the multifamily zoning because that lot size is a little bit smaller. Either way, it would have been a PD if we called it RS5 PD, still would have been a PD, but it's a single-family subdivision. So, I wanted to at least try to respond to some of the
And Larry? Comments? How about, and if you answered this, I'm sorry, I missed it, how it fits in with the general plan?
We just got through that, I should know that answer, but I'm going to have Kelsey save me here.
Larry, while you're there, is this an age restricted community?
No, it's not an age restricted community.
And how does communities like this that come in impact the supply of housing as relates to affordability?
Well, again, the smaller lot size, I think helps. I mean, just housing prices, if you own your own house today, you know what the value of your house has done in the last three, four years. Housing, buying a house now, people are trying to sell, but then they can't even go buy the new one because they, they can't afford to even buy the new one and, because people have
And how, and how fast are the homes that are, do we have very many lots even up for sale in AJ? And how fast are the lots going in terms of expectations and anticipation at Goldfield and others?
Well, I know that coming out of the recession, like Dan Kaufman filled up some of his subdivisions and then the two that he recently did, those were built out really within about 18 months. So, Mr. Hassel's other project, 84 lots down on Southern and Ironwood, that's essentially built out, he's still under construction, but those are all sold, I understand. So, single-family homes have been selling. In the, in the region, multifamily has been taking off. So, that's why we've seen a couple, single-family but rental. So, we have the project at Southern and Meridian and we have the one just up the street here at Superstition and Main. But
And how many apartment complexes do we have in the city?
How many apartment complexes? Two. So, we have two apartment complexes, one on South Phelps and then one at Royal Palm and Old West Highway. And the other one, I think, was converted to a condo before someone lived on this property and camped out at the KOA and moved to Quail Creek.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for that.
Yes.
I'll be right there, you can, when you remember, you can ask me.
Kelsey, if you'll answer the general plan question.
Your Honor.
What was I just looking at?
This does require a minor general plan amendment. It was originally designated as medium-density and commercial, so the findings of fact were included in the staff report. So, this property does require a minor general plan amendment.
So, that's how it fits in? It needs to have a minor adjustment?
It needs to have a minor, correct.
It has to be bigger than ten acres, doesn't it, to require the major?
Correct.
Yes.
So, because it's currently B1 and RS20, granted, if this was a slightly smaller development, residential could go here. Current?
Correct.
Thank you.
I remember my question. On Gold, the developer is going to be responsible for improving his half of Gold sidewalks and everything?
Correct.
Okay, so that would accommodate, if there is parking there, they're not just parking on dirt and everything like that?
Yeah, it'd be curb gutter, I'm sorry.
Curb gutter and sidewalk. And it is not against the law to park on a city street where there's a curb. So, if someone's coming to visit, or they happen to live there, they may park in front of that unit and walk in the front door. Obviously, not on Superstition or Ironwood, but, yes. Full half-street improvement.
Well, I just wanted Emile, there were some questions about the, what triggers a D cell lane, and it's important. And how close was this to that analysis?
Good evening, Mayor Wilson. Councilmembers, Emile Schmidt, city engineer, Public Works Department. We get this question once in a while, I'd say, and it usually comes down to the size of the development. And in looking back over the thirteen years that I've been here, and the different types of, excuse me, developments that have come in, different improvements that were made to those developments, it seems like that the breaking point in size for requiring a traffic impact analysis, or even requiring that a D cell lane be installed, is right around 100 units, 120 units. And I can go back and cite a couple of examples where we have done that and where we have not done that. So, the Goldview subdivision that's currently under construction, 178 lots, I believe, during the design process, we asked the developer to install a right-turn D cell lane on eastbound Old West Highway onto Star, excuse me, because that'll be a road that they're improving that will give access to residents there, as well as a southbound right-turn D cell lane off of Goldfield Road. And they have the option of performing a traffic impact analysis to demonstrate, based on formulas and uses and so on and so forth, whether a right-turn lane is justified. And in the case of Goldview, with 178 units, they demonstrated through a traffic impact analysis that those were not needed. Another example is Old West Marketplace. That is, I'm just going to go out on a limb and say, that's probably the single-largest traffic driver that we have in the city. And they, without question, installed several right-turn D cell lanes. I believe there's two on Old West Highway approaching Idaho Road, and there's also one on Idaho Road, which is State Department of Transportation right-of-way. And they worked with ADOT to get that right-turn lane installed. And they didn't question it. You know, they didn't fight back, they didn't push back. Some other developments that come to mind, Stagecoach Trails on North Main Drive. I don't know off the top of my head how many homes are in that. It's 15 acres, I believe, and they do not have a right-turn D cell lane. Granted, Main Drive is not an Ironwood Drive or an Idaho Road, but I haven't heard any issues or complaints on that particular subdivision going in. So, in this case, when this plan came through, you know, we saw, okay, 96 units, somewhere around there. I don't know if that was the number from the get-go or not, but that's where we're at now. My recommendation was that we did not need to have a D cell lane. Now, I understand the concerns about Ironwood being, you know, five lanes, two northbound, two southbound. We have a common left-turn lane, or two-way left-turn lane, in the middle of the road. I know that north of Superstition, we, you know, the road tapers down to a two-lane northbound from there, I believe. We don't have the 50 feet of right-of-way on the east side of Ironwood north of that, so it's hard to say or for, project down the road what's going to happen on Ironwood Drive north of Superstition. I think there's going to be some issues when, if we get around to needing to acquire right-of-way to build out that road. Ironwood Drive, by our traffic counts, is our busiest road, but the majority, well, I'm not going to say the majority, the larger number of traffic volume occurs south of Apache Trail on Ironwood Drive. As you come north, the numbers just start tapering, tapering down. Now, I live in Mesa, so a lot of times I compare to things that I see in Mesa or other cities. And I'll just list off some roads. Gilbert, Lindsay, Val Vista, Greenfield, Higley, Wrecker, those are all five-lane roads. And many of those roads easily, easily have doubled the traffic volume that we see on Ironwood Drive. Those are very busy roads, and I don't see a lot of right-turn D cell lanes into even commercial centers on some of those roads. I travel them quite frequently, have done so for the last 26 years. So, I think that with my recommendation, I'm being consistent with how other properties and projects here in the city have been treated, and I'm being consistent with what's being done in surrounding communities. And the reason I compare to surrounding communities is because I don't like reinventing the wheel. If somebody else has gone down the road of all the bumps and hiccups and problems and issues, and they've resolved it over 20 years, I'll borrow from their model and apply it here. So, as far as the right-turn D cell lane goes, that was our recommendation, just based on the amount of units in there and from the experience that we've had with other similar developments in the city. So, kind of a long-winded response, I apologize, but...
Well, you're an engineer.
That means I can keep going.
Thank you.
But I have one question for you, that you might be able to clarify before calling other people up. Where that gate is...
Correct.
You can stack cars before you'll be out on Ironwood. How many cars can stack at that gate?
Well, I will use a 21-foot truck.
Would it be two or three?
In that analysis. I took a look at it, and again, with the...
I mean, that's a typical regulation, right? Because if you do have a gate, you're not supposed to be backing up onto the street long times.
Yeah, I'll say at least two, maybe three, four, if you've got some small cars, yeah.
Yeah.
But the advantage of that gate that we have, that they're proposing at the southwest corner, is that if somebody pulls in off of Ironwood Drive, and for whatever reason they can't get into the community, or, you know, their key fob or key code isn't working anymore, they can turn around and come back out onto Ironwood Nose first, instead of, you know, having to back out.
And that is also a regulation, that you have to be able to turn into that entrance before a gate to go back out.
Yes, and this has been done on other communities as well.
Right. And this particular drawing doesn't actually see where the gate is.
I think there was another image where it did show a gate on both the Gold and the Ironwood Drive entrances. Maybe it was the black-and-white image, I can't remember, but I did see the gate. And I think it was at the second island there.
Reese?
I have them on my presentation.
There they are.
There it is.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, we see the gates quite clearly on that one.
Reese, do you have a better one? I don't know, want me to?
With permission, ma'am?
Yes.
If you'll go to my presentation again, and I hate to take Emile's time, but I think the detail that you're asking for, we thought that you might ask, and so we prepared. So, it's near the end, and keep going, if you would, please. Yep, keep going. Yep, keep going. There you go. This is our gate detail. So, from the right-of-way to the control box is 42 and a half feet. That fits a 21-foot truck. Two of them. The next distance from that to the gate is 35.3, and so the gate is there at the same mark as you see where the second island is. Now, I'm going to do the next part reluctantly, and I hope you, if you'd go to the next slide, please. Just so you know what the industry standards, Apache Junction, I know is working on this, but doesn't yet have a standard detail. This is from Gilbert, one of your neighbors. It gives you those dimensions, et cetera, and it asks you how many units you have, and I've highlighted it in yellow. If you're less than 100, you have 40 feet of stacking distance. That's what's provided there. One more slide. This is from your other neighbor, Mesa, and I'm always reluctant to compare, but just these standard details. Less, so, it's the same, right there. So, the dimensions are the same, the number counts are the same. So, this is the standard detail in the industry that we followed here. I appreciate all the larger discussion, and I'd love to share thoughts about everyone's questions, including Vice Mayor Rizzi, but only if I'm called back up. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any discussion with among ourselves on this?
I need to know how long this is going to last.
I would just say that...
And I will be back next month.
I would just say that there's a lot of things that we didn't expect to happen as we evolve, and a lot of different businesses that came in that we would have not planned 10, or 20, or, you know, 15 years ago. And so, again, I just, it's not, I love the development. Honestly, I would love to live there. For me, it's just not the right location. I just, I can't, I can't, if it was, if there were a different location, if it was in a different area, and, you know, we can talk about Superstition not being a business corridor, we're shaping our community. It can be, if we continue and make it that. It won't be if we continue not to shape it in that direction. And so, we have the ability to shape it. Are we going to do this on Old West Highway? Are we going to cave on those commercial properties and make them all houses? I mean, we need houses. We know the houses are coming, but what's going to happen? I just want everybody to think about what's going to happen when we have houses and no place left for the businesses to go. I mean, that's just a concern of mine. I love it. Love the development, just not that location, so.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Can I ask for a motion on number 12, ordinance number 1500, for the rezone approximately seven acres?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1500 be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
No.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Well, this, just for clarification, this is just, this isn't deciding whether or not to have the development. This is just for the reading.
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. She don't have to read every word of it now.
All right, I'm going to go slow here.
Yeah, you wanted to read all.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for a proposed new subdivision named Ironwood Station to be located on the property, described in rezoning case PZ-10-20, a request by Bella Flora Communities LLC, represented by Reese Anderson and John Gillespie of Pew and Lake PLC, from General Commercial B-1 and Medium-Density Single Family Detached Residential RS-20M, to High Density Multiple Family Residential by Planned Development RM-2PD, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Now, for the main motion.
Now, can I have the main motion?
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number 1500, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Your Honor, I just want to clarify, this is to only rezone the property at this point.
Right.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
No.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
No.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
No.
Mayor Wilson?
We're going out here. Well, I like the plan, and I'm going to say yes.
Motion passes four to three, Your Honor.
Sorry.
Be sorry.
Okay, so now we need to do the public hearing, consideration for, no, not public hearing, excuse me, just strictly the motion for number three, which is, 13, rather, which is resolution number 21-02.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number 21-02, case SD-2-20, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Apache Junction, for a 96-lot residential subdivision located near southeast corner of Ironwood Drive and Superstition Boulevard be approved.
Do I have a second?
Can we add an amendment? Or may we add amendments to that? Can we make an amendment to include no parking along Gold Drive?
You may.
I would like to make that amendment, then.
The entire Gold Drive.
Not the entire Gold Drive, just in, no, I agree, no, in front of the development. Parking anywhere else, except the development.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm confused. Wait a second.
First of all, there's not a second yet, but do you want to open it up for discussion on it instead?
That...
Okay, for the discussion on his amendment, is what you're asking?
Yes, or you can withdraw your motion and then just discuss it. It makes it easier. That way, you don't have an amendment, but...
Okay, I can withdraw that part of it. But my question to you is, do you want no parking all along Gold, or parking for, in front of the homes, condos that face Gold?
How would they enforce that?
Can those people park in front of their own units, but not the rest of Gold?
I would like no parking in front of the proposed units currently, because there are homes that have areas to pull off to the side of the road to park where they're not on the road, as opposed to this residential neighborhood has no side area to be off the road, if that makes sense.
So, you're saying just the west side?
Correct.
The west side of Gold next to the...
And if I may, for the frontage of that property, of this property, correct?
Correct.
So, what's to stop them from parking on the east side of the road, then?
Well, then throw in the east side.
The no parking, no parking sign.
No parking on the east, on the west, on the east or west side.
So, now you want them to just go a little further south and park in by other people's houses on the west side?
Well, I mean, at some point, you know, they could go down the street and park at the tail end of the street. We can't make no parking on the whole street. There are people who have homes that have ample room to be able to pull off and park. There is no ample room here to be able to park right next to a turn-on from Superstition or a turn-off from Gold.
How do they have less room than the other houses down further south?
Because there are some homes that have a setback, and the road is not, there is...
There's no curb gutter sidewalk.
Yeah, there's no curb gutter sidewalk down on that end.
Are we, are we kind of discussing a motion here?
I don't know what we're discussing.
Well, yeah, I can't, I can't get behind telling the city residents that they can't park on a public street in a residential, down a residential area.
Not that I support it, but I think that muddles it a little much, and especially for staff to try to figure out how to create that and enforce it. I wouldn't touch that.
Is it going to be enforced?
Well, yeah, are you going to ask, do you live there or there?
If I remember right, what the developer was saying, that in their CCNRs, that they can put in there to be no parking on their side of Gold.
Right, but if they had a guest come visit them, I mean, they're not going to, that wouldn't pertain to the owner of the home, though, right?
Right, that's right.
I mean, my concern is the fact there are 39 guest parking spots, and if we allow parking on the road, they're really additional guest parking for any of those residents. They should be utilizing the guest parking that is readily available by the developer. I mean, it's not a make or break for me. I have a problem with on-street parking... I have a problem with on-street parking on Gold. I think it's going to open up a big challenge.
Do we want to ask the chief on how, what his thoughts are on enforcement?
Okay.
Yeah, tell me where you can-
I mean, could you get down the avenue that if people leaving the complex, their vision may be impeded, the cars there, if anybody coming around to make a turn out?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
You ready?
Yes.
Mayor, city council, what is your question?
Right?
No idea.
Parking or not to park, that's the question. I guess, you've got to remember now, remember, we've had this issue addressed before in Cortez, where we've had no parking, and we've had that as a constant complaint.
And 16th Avenue, too.
In numerous places. We try to work with the community on that, but it's your desire what you want to do. Signage on there, I mean, there's a variety of things you could do, and parking-wise is, I mean, it is a public street. People want to park in front of their homes, can't park in front of their homes, or can. So, I mean, it's kind of what your desire is. And the public works, they have to post the signage. Your officers would then go and cite the people that live there for parking in front of their house because it says no parking.
I think it just makes the best-
It's your call.
I waive my amendment.
Thank you very much. Your police department appreciates you.
So now you, so there's no motion on the table, so you can now call for another motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I can now ask for a motion for this?
Okay. I move that resolution number 21-02, case SD-2-20, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, for a 96-lot residential subdivision located near the southeast corner of Ironwood Drive and Superstition Boulevard be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
No.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
No.
Councilmember Gremmell?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Back to me again, flip my coins. Again, I like the development, I like the development going into the area. It's an improvement for the entire area, so yes.
Motion passes four to three, Your Honor.
And I'd like to take a five-minute break.
God bless you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Sitting here going, oh my gosh.
Call the city council back in order, again. Public hearing on proposed ordinance number 1501 for rezoning of 7.93 acres for a 107-lot residential subdivision.
Your speaker, Ron.
So this is the applicant's presentation. This one is city staff, so I'm just pulling that up. Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Nick Leftwich. I'm a planning intern for the city of Apache Junction, so I'm part of city staff. And today, we're just going to be talking about and reviewing PZ-1-20, which is the Old West Highway Village proposed rezoning. So this is a request by Apache Junction 772 LLC. It's a rezoning of these two parcels on Old West Highway between Royal Palm and Tomahawk. These two parcels are currently zoned B4, which is business park, light industrial. And historically, this property has always been vacant. At one point, it was used as a driving range, but it's pretty much always been vacant in usage. And again, the general plan designates this as a, as light industrial business park. So in order to do this rezoning, it would require a minor general plan amendment to become high-density residential. As you can see here, this is the zoning map of the surrounding area. Across the street, even though there is, it is zoned B1 commercial and RM2, which is another high-density residential. However, as you might have seen right before, it currently stands vacant. And then you have to the south and to the west, there is residential neighborhood, and we have several of those property owners here tonight. And those are essentially surrounding uses. Some things are similar to what have been proposed, some things are also commercial, and then there's a mix of residential, so there's kind of just a spectrum of uses right here. Again, with the general plan, it essentially reflects the same information. These designations have kind of been here along Old West Highway. It is a designated commercial corridor for that. This is a site plan. I do want to mention that at this point in the process, they have not proposed a pre-plot, unlike the project that we just barely saw. So currently, this is a conceptual plan. One of the conditions is that the pre-plot would eventually look like this were it to be approved, so, but there's still room that things would change, things would be adjusted. So at this point, I just want to reiterate, it is conceptual, and it's not as final as the project right before was, and that's still on the preliminary plot stage. But this is Old West Highway. This is the, this is designated in this plan, at least, as the only entrance. Right here, there is Egress up on the north side, so that was designated as exit only. But then you would have a deceleration lane, I know, off of Old West Highway, and that would lead into this townhome, so they are going to be subdivi, the plan is, at least, I mean, to be subdivided for individual ownership, just like Ironwood Station, the project right before. Currently, within this model of the site plan, there are 107 townhome units designated. Let's see. I will say, while we're looking on the plan, were it to be approved, staff has issued several different conditions that would include, that would alter the site plan, such as the incorporation of amenities, different community aspects. Staff has proposed at least the, limiting the height along all these eastern, or sorry, western and southern border units. And with that, there are these planned development deviations that the applicant has requested. Much like the project before, it should be mentioned that the zoning code itself does not account for townhome-type development, and so a lot of these deviations exist simply because there isn't like a townhome type zone. So it would eliminate the setbacks so that there could be attached buildings from the lots. The developer is proposing to have a much smaller lot area. It's a minimum of 1,000 square feet, and then their idea is that you would kind of make that up in height. That is what they believe. The height itself is not changing from either the base zoning standard or the current zoning itself. And they are proposing a smaller lot width from 60 feet to 20 feet in order to have 20-foot-wide townhomes. There was one other mention of a lot depth, but that's not, lot depth isn't actually mandated in the code anyway, but it was something that I think they, they put there so that we'd have an idea of the size of the lots. This is a model elevation. Again, these things are preliminary at this point. You can see here, and I think I have this one, so there's, they proposed two different block types, a three-unit block and a four-unit block. And a thing to note in both of these, and looking back at the site plan, so you have four-unit blocks and three-unit blocks, and the applicant proposes that the middle units of those blocks will be three-story, while with the, I guess, border units being two-story, as shown here. We don't have a finalized site plan, but this is the idea that the applicant has proposed. So there was a neighborhood meeting. This, this project has kind of been in the workings for about a year at the city stage. Some things had to be postponed last year because the pandemic caused some things to be drawn out, and we required some more information. And so it was continued until a later date, and it has become, come before the council before, but not for review. So this meeting was held, the neighborhood meeting regarding this process was held February 20th, 2020, so almost a whole year ago, with seven neighbors in attendance. Some of them are here tonight. A lot of the comments that have been shared throughout this whole year process have been comments opposing the project due to concerns regarding height and privacy, density, and stormwater control. And so we have some, some comments regarding those, that the developer has prepared a presentation relating to this and relating to concerns from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Written letters and comments have been provided there in the staff report, and I received an extra letter just about a week ago, and that has been provided. I put that on everyone's desk so that they would have that as well before the meeting. Looking back to just a couple weeks, a few weeks ago, on January 2nd, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted against the approval of PZ-120 on a four to three vote for very similar concerns of what, of what was just voted on before. They had concerns primarily about the loss of this commercial industrial land. But with that, with the staff analysis and recommendations, staff recommends that any approval that would happen is, and we recommend the approval subject to the conditions found in the staff report. So there's quite a lengthy list of conditions, and those are all there in order to ensure that this project meets the needs of the community. Like I mentioned, the inclusion of community amenities. Staff has proposed restrictions on the height in order to protect the neighbors a little bit, and we understand that a lot of these conditions are subject to, to your whim and approval or your change. What the applicant has agreed to meet, just about all of those conditions. They had one issue with the height. I don't know if they are going to talk about that in their presentation today, as they did in the Planning and Zoning Commission. But if you have any questions for me right now, before the applicant's presentation, I'd be happy to answer them.
If this was to remain light industrial business park, what is the maximum height that could go in there?
So the maximum height is the same. It is 35 feet.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so one way or the other, we're at 35 feet, whether it's residential or whether it's light industrial.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Could you give an idea of what light, what could go in there, being zoned as it is now? What type of things could go in there and be 35 feet?
So B4, business park, light industrial zone, is kind of a, it's a weird transitional zone between our B5 industrial zone and the B1, B2, B3. B2 and B3 are obviously commercial, but they are kind of area-based, like B3 is the downtown and B2 is primarily Apache Trail, not in downtown. So B1 is the general commercial zone, and B4 shares some similarities, but B4 is typically with more intensive uses. And as a transitional zone to in the B5 industrial, it allows for things such as manufacturing, a lot of warehouses-type developments. A lot of it is standard, standard commercial projects are allowed there. But in terms of the difference between a B1 and a B4 zone, it is primarily the inclusion of more intensive uses like manufacturing. The B4 that we currently see in the city, so there's a little bit down here, or in a little bit further south, primarily it's used for storage yards at the current time. But that's what we typically see with B4.
I have a question, Your Honor.
Yes.
So, can I put it in perspective? So-
Yes.
Behind the Filiberto's, the DES, you have that three-story glass building that's got the dentists and everything. Something like that could be put in this area?
Under the current zoning, yes.
Or, and then, and then outside of that, a warehouse type of-
Yes.
-situation could also go there?
Yes. Under the, the code's allowances and the use table, all those things are allowed under the current zoning.
So it could be a lot noisier as far as, when you say manufacturing, I'm thinking like air guns or saws or some sort of noise like that?
Speaking of the potential of what could be, yes.
Trucks coming in and out, like bigger, larger trucks coming in and out for deliveries?
Depending on what use goes in there, yeah. It has the potential.
Yeah.
The news, the new noise ordinance, though, that the past council adopted would cover, I mean, obviously, they can't stop any of that noise, but it covers things being-
Yeah, if there was a noise problem and it is observed from the neighboring parcels and to exceed what city regulation allows for, then those things could be addressed, of course.
Anyone else?
And there's no time factor. It could be a 24, and I keep thinking, at one point, we had a company that wanted to do a trash recycling plant, and it was actually across the street of Old West Highway. They wanted to be open 24/7, which there was a lot of noise involved in that with garbage trucks backing up and making that beeping sound that they make. In this location, it could be a 24-hour business as well, correct?
Yeah, as the standard before, like the zoning ordinance itself does not restrict that kind of time, time-based business, yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, some things, I have seen planned development ordinances that are more restrictive, but as a base zoning before, the zoning ordinance simply doesn't account, like it doesn't regulate the time a business can operate.
Okay.
So that is correct, that-
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Has there been, as far back as you know, any, anybody who's, wants to do anything there commercially, ever?
That is a good question. I can say that the current owners, Apache Junction 772 LLC, have owned this property for 16 years. So they're the ones proposing this rezoning and this development, and so going, going back at least 16 years, we haven't really seen any projects come. I think they, I believe the applicant can speak to that, but if they initially had plans, I believe the recession might have gotten in the way, but they'll be able to answer some of that as the property owners. As a, regarding anything that I've seen proposed in the past, I don't believe I've seen record of anything, but I'll let the property owner speak to that.
I have one question. So you see how Old West Highway is white?
Yes.
And next to the, the property that we're going to discuss tonight?
Like this, or?
Is that an easement? What exactly is that?
So there is some record of an easement there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so currently, I think the, the neighbors have accessed that and used that before. So as I understand, there is an easement there. I, let's see, so this shows the city right-of-way, so it is actually a dedicated alley of sorts, and that is why it shows up white on that map. And the site plan does not kind of have any access to that, but, because it primarily exists off a property that you can kind of see some right here.
On the end, yeah.
But that, so yeah, that does currently exist. But that, so yeah, that does currently exist.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak and address this issue? Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Greg Loper. My address is 22757 West Mojave Street in Buckeye. And I've got the commute, and so I'll try to keep this quick for me as well as for you. I appreciate your indulgence on this application tonight. It'll be, we'll have to see whether it was good following the previous project or not, but it brought up some good points that, that I, that came up somewhat in the planning commission, but I want to address tonight. Couple of things I wanted to address real quick because they were comments that I don't have slides for. One is, our application is in error on the height. Our maximum height is 30 feet, not 35. And that's, that's a typo on my part, so I have to take, I have to fall on the sword for that. The other one is, is that little alleyway is a utility easement. If you, if you're there, out there, you would see there's overhead utility lines. It is fee simple, it's the city's, if you will. We don't propose any access to it, but, but it exists. There's a similar one, but it's an easement along our southern border. If you go there today, you'll see power lines that go along the top of that. I have two presentations that total an unbelievable amount of slides, and I know nobody really wants to see them. I want to thank Nick and Rudy and rest of staff for getting me to this point. He did an outstanding job going over the project. So with your indulgence, I'll stick to the ones that really, that came from the planning commission about the reason for the, the commercial, reducing commercial in the city, as well as the neighborhood issues. This is a rendering of the frontage of our project. As with the previous one, we front the street. The difference is we will have a six-foot-high combination view fence, regular fence along the frontage. We didn't show that because it would have blocked the first floor and some of the landscaping. As mentioned, you know where our property is. Jump through this real quick. The developer of this is Frank Delarmy. He's the developer of Superstition Mountain Estates, for those of you familiar with it by the rodeo ground. Frank's feeling ill and unable to attend tonight. We're not age-restricted. The Planning and Zoning Commission, the motion was to approve, and it failed on a three-four vote. So it was the same as if they'd recommended denial. The primary reasons were two things. One, removing what, what could be seen as viable B4 zoning from the, the city's stock, if you will. And the other was the impact on the views on the neighbors to the south and west. And as you know, we can't regulate views, and it can't be a decision for a denial, but they're here. We've, we've had discussions, we agree to disagree, but I do want to talk about that for a little bit. So our B4 zoning, a lot of the existing commercial industrial, as those of you who've been in the area a long time, and I have, know, is from when this was US 60. And it was the main drag-through town. And it created an overabundance of commercial. And I'll get into that because everybody's going to disagree on what I'm saying with that, or possibly. But there's a lot of vacant commercial in the city of Apache Junction. There's a lot of underperforming commercial that doesn't live up to the expectations, if you will, of what could happen in B4 or B5 or B3, 2, and 1. I will draw anecdotally from my own experience. I worked through most of the 90s and 2000s for the city of Casa Grande. And as they began to grow, as Apache Junction is growing, in fact, there's probably not a community living Buckeye. I know what Buckeye's going through. Not a community doesn't face the same pressure. Residential, how do we balance it? I can tell you, of course, this is a residential project, so I'm prejudiced, but you do need rooftops to drive commercial. Industrial, not so much. Depends on the type of industrial and the workforce they need. So this is a slide that shows where the B4 is in the city. If my calculations are correct, there's only about 60 acres of B4. There's not an overabundance. And most of it's concentrated along the stretch of Old West Highway, which is where our property is. We're just under eight acres, just around 60 acres. My scaling it off, so I won't profess it's exactly accurate. But certainly, we represent an eighth, if you will, maybe a seventh of that commercial zoning, of that B4 zoning. In the city itself, there's about 350 acres that are zoned industrial. Not a significant amount, especially when you look at a big chunk of it's the landfill. But I was going off the zoning map, not the general plan. What uses are allowed in B4? Some of that was discussed by the council members and Nick a minute ago. I can tell you, after examining every land use, and I didn't want to put them all up here, that I found three land uses that are allowed in B4 that aren't allowed in B3, might be in B2, but certainly aren't in B5. Those were a used furniture shop, used furniture sales, a pawn shop, and a check-cashing store. And staff can certainly verify that. There might be one or two I missed, but that was going through the list. And as was mentioned, B4 is kind of a bridge, if you will, from, from commercial uses to more industrial-type uses. And there's a lot that could happen on this property today. What do you look at when you look for an industrial site? I'll tell you the circumstances of ours. One is the triangular shape presents some site-planning challenges. You know, people tend to like the rectangular or the square. Not that it can't be, but as mentioned, the people I represent through Frank Delarmy, they've had this for 16 years. And I can tell you, they've marketed it for industrial uses, but there's just been no takers. I think the, they were hoping that the driving range would stay on so at least they could get some, some lease money from that. Again, the holdover, the predominance of industrial, commercial along the former US 60, there's a lot of industrial down by the US 60 today, the superstition freeway. That makes sense. Again, additional and new housing opportunities are needed to support the existing and new commercial and redevelopment of commercial and employment, plus this proximity to CAC makes sense. Number one indicator for the site, location, location, location. Couple of other things about this property I don't have on the slide, but if you've driven by it, you're familiar with. This property is about five feet lower
Yeah.
than the roadway. And we do have a deceleration lane. But what that presents an issue for are trucks. Also, there's a median cut in front of our property, but there aren't two good full-turn accesses. As Nick mentioned, we have a ride-out onto Old West Highway. They'd have to go down probably either the median cut, which does have a left-turn lane, or the intersection at Tomahawk to be able to turn around to go into town. But it does not make it ideal for that. Also, as mentioned, I think in the previous case, under land costs, yeah, we've reached a situation today where residential land is going for more than commercial land and certainly for industrial land. It's not everywhere. I'm not going to say that throughout the city of Apache Junction, but certainly in locations. And part of that is the proliferation. I passed by the zoning map, but if, but you're familiar with it. It is a dark red blur across the middle of Apache Junction. When you look at areas, and I go back to Casa Grande and Buckeye today, what's happening is commercial development tends to cluster. It works best when it clusters. The shopping center, name escapes me, although it shouldn't, is a prime example of that. Relatively new, things are coming in next to it, across the street. That'll continue at that intersection because it presents its own synergy for that particular area. When you just have strip development, you actually increase traffic issues. You have numerous driveways, people are pulling in and pulling out. It doesn't help it. And, and that is one of the main reasons why this site's just not been effective for industrial or business park, if you will, to this day. On the development standards, I wanted to point out a couple. One, this is zone B4, not with a planned development on it. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but that means somebody could walk in today with a set of plans and begin development on it. There's no public process into how that develops. There's the codes and ordinances of the city, but there's not a public process. You're seeing the result, whether we agree or not, on a very public process about how this particular property develops. My math, but the lot coverage on the overall site today under the B4 is about 92.5%. Would it all be developed? Absolutely not. There would be needs for retention, be needs for parking. But I'm saying that the development standard today would allow that to occur. We're at 35%, my math, if you just take the building footprints. Our setbacks are more than double for the, for the side yards and the rear, which is what is against the adjacent residential. Maximum size, there's no limit. Ours is 4520, which is a block of the four homes. Maximum height here, I corrected it, 30 feet. I'd be more than happy to stipulate to that, too, but it's certainly on the record. So I wanted to move from that, and some of the discussion happened before with Nick, to the issue about the views from the property. This one, even though we'd had the neighborhood meeting, I have to confess, I wasn't as well-prepared for the planning commission as I should have been. And the same for the discussion on the zoning. So the predominant views of the superstitions, and it's largely east-northeast of the property. And if you're out there and you know from any part of the eastern part of Apache Junction, the superstitions loom large. This is not a mountain range, kind of like in the last project where it's lower. No, they're, they're there. And it would take quite a, quite a obstacle, if you will, to be able to not see those. This is a view and doesn't do it justice. But this is a Google Earth view taken from the street to the south of us. But you can see superstitions almost exactly due east. So I wanted to talk about, a little bit about the developments to the south and west. Most of these homes were built in the 50s. It was plotted in 1950. They're, they're larger homes on larger lots with big backyards. The rear setback on all of these, except for this lot right here, is 30 feet. Some of them are 40 feet. This lot is at 20. All of the homes have walls along them. So it, you don't have an unfettered view of the superstitions, even from the street or from the front yard. Many of the homes, their neighbor blocks that view, if you will. And they're single-story homes, but it affects that view. And I put arrows on here, kind of the predominant view. If I lived in this home, the view out my rear, I would have to admit, would be priceless, having that. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So again, the subject size is about five feet lower than the neighbors. And then also, as you can see here, there's significant landscaping, especially along the south and somewhat along the west. That obstructs views today. Here's a view of some of that landscaping. This is the southern part. This is along the west. That's not a very good photo. I apologize for that. But you can see from the aerial back here that, that it exists today. Our setback and our, is to maintain as much of, much of that in that setback area as possible. If not, we're going to salvage those trees and use them in other areas in the development. So I wanted to kind of go, a number of people before identified themselves with specific lots. So if you will, I'll go through these real quick. So this is the lot at the corner, right here, of the development, Lot 11. Their nearest home is approximately 55 feet, our nearest home, I'm sorry, from their property line. Plus, there's a setback. There's some existing vegetation, not significant, but the proposal will put more landscaping in that area. This is a line of sight drawing. It is my drawing based on engineered diagrams, but this, I thought, looked better. Doesn't take into account that the site's lower, but it shows you that at a 55-foot setback and 30 feet back, the average person with an eye, about a six-foot person, which is a little bit taller than me, but my forehead probably makes it appear I'm that tall, it, your eye level over the wall through the vegetation, you're not going to see this home. As you go down, the same thing occurs. Some of the homes right at the corner, significant vegetation and over 100-plus feet to the nearest home. Occurs with this home. Again, this home at the corner, they don't really have a view per se because of the vegetation and the neighbor to them. Now, an issue does happen as you get to the southern lots. Let me get to the good ones here. As we get closer, the property is designed so that the retention is the southwest corner. That's the current existing state. Got the engineer here with me if you have questions on that that I can't answer. But as you, the development is primarily away from that southwest corner, east and north of it. So as you go eastward, the homes come back closer to the property line. As you get to this one, it's only 20 feet from their rear property line to a home. Then, as indicated here, with that, they see, but for the vegetation, they would see a portion of the second story of those homes at 30 feet. So what we would be willing to do, I'm going through this quickly, but I can go slide by slide if you like, is for the, the southern group of lots, is to flip it. If you see here on the west, we have the roadway that comes down. What we do is take that roadway here and keep the lots away from them. There'd be a landscaping buffer. There's 20-foot natural easement anyway. That'd be a setback. It could vary. The roadways, this is not a gated community. The streets are 28 feet wide. They're wider, not for parking, but they're wider because we recognize there's the occasional pull-up Amazon vehicle or UPS or somebody like that, and that you can't plan against just people's habits, if you will. There will be an HOA to manage it. There's not supposed to be street parking. We have over 55 guest spaces, average of half a guest space per home. And really, and again, be happy to stipulate to this if that would make a difference in people's consideration. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or address anything or give you the other part of the presentation.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when you say you're going to flip those, are you suggesting they're going to go to the west side? Are you going to have the street on the other side of those homes?
Mayor Wilson, Councilmember Schroeder, yes, the, the road would, you can see what I'm doing, right? So the road would continue in this area, and the homes would take the place of the road here. It'd be shifted up.
Forty-eight feet instead of 20 feet? If you have a 28-foot street, and as of now, they're 20 foot from the property line?
Right. It'd be a minimum of 48 feet away from that south property line. And if you go back to
The 50-footer, right.
This one, a 40-foot setback, you just maybe catch the edge of the eve at 30 feet for a two-story home.
We've seen other developers do this for consideration of the neighbors.
And I, and again, they'll, they tell a very compelling argument. I can't stand up here and say, oh, it wouldn't have the same if it were me. And we thought this was the least we could do for it. I hope I answered your question.
You did. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess I have one.
Yes?
So, not that I'm a meanie or anything, but is this a real project or is this a project you're looking to flip? You just want the rezoning done to flip it?
Mayor Wilson and Councilmember Evans. The reason, so this project started, as Nick mentioned, through the city a little over a year ago. During, during that, we had the pandemic.
I remember that all.
Oh, yeah. But it changed the dynamic of the types of homes that people are looking for. So we did, we opted not to do a preliminary plat. We'll come back relatively quickly if zoning is approved with a preliminary plat. But because of the issues from the neighborhood meeting, we didn't, there's a significant expense in the investment of a preliminary plat.
Sure.
And so that's the reason we held off on it. We wanted to know if the zoning goes through. If the zoning doesn't go through, we've thrown away $75,000 in engineering fees, let alone what's been spent today. And that may not mean a lot to everybody here, but it certainly meant a lot to us as we were trying to do this during the pandemic anyway, when we shifted through engineers and site plans and things like that.
So I guess my question is?
Yes.
You are going to, you are actually going to develop it, not just flip it and hope somebody picks it up?
We are the developer. I will tell you, Frank Delarmy's developing the, the project I was telling you about with the semi-custom homes. We've had other projects. Yeah, some have been sold. You know, it's a have been sold. You know, it's a it's a very hot market, and different people come in and they want to buy the property. Our plan today is develop it. We'll come through the preliminary plat, final plat, improvement plans.
And and my question, because we've had so many people come in, ask for rezoning, and nothing happens. If we go through all of this, we want a viable project, not a maybe.
Oh, definitely understood. And I think you heard in the previous discussion, the the market today, for lack of a better way of putting it, is just, it's hot, and it's projected to remain that way.
It's insane.
With employment, and I wish I wish I could capitalize on it more frankly, but be that as it may, this will be a very viable project, and we see it for for the foreseeable future.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, I mean, I get it, the market's hot. I mean, that that could change in six months.
Certainly.
Now, there's something to be said about, you're saying, okay, it costs like seventy-five thousand dollars to get the plat, and you didn't want to put that money into it to bring it here before it was rezoned, because then that'd be good and the bad. But there's something to be said about showing us a financial commitment to this project that was saying, yes, we are doing this.
Certainly. And and I will tell you that to get us to this point, there's a site design. It's going to change if 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 this is approved and we flip the lots. So that would have been a different design change to it. We've done preliminary grading and drainage plans. We've worked with SRP on the relocation of the power lines that are along Old West Highway today, and what are we gonna do with the power lines on our southern border? Those, we've dealt with sewer and water basis of design reports, stormwater. So even though you don't see a pre-plat, there's a lot of, there's a lot of background work just to make sure a design like this would even work, even before the city would take us to council, from the city staff.
But as far as bringing it to us, we basically have nothing.
I I don't remember if there's a a stipulation that talks about conformance with the site plan, but no, this is, this is, I would, with all due respect, say that that this is a signif, this is not something I just drew on a piece of paper. It does represent a lot of effort brought into it, and preliminary plat's a next phase.
I see absolutely it does, but these are the exact sort of situations that Councilmember Everett was talking about. These are the things that do come to council, just to get the zoning changed. And of course, they're not gonna come out with, excuse me, because I did notice a stick figure on your drawing, but it's not like you just drew something about a piece of paper and sent it to us. It has to have some professionalism done to it and some engineering done to it in order to us to change the zone. I get that. So that's something that would have to be done regardless. I just would like to know that, yeah, we want to see something that's gonna that's gonna happen. So like, one of the, one of the things that, so I'm not against this. Now, there are, there are a lot of things that that have been said tonight, previous presentation, this presentation about, you know, this, this, this property has been sitting for sixteen years and no one, you know, hey, this is, now you've got somebody that wants to do something with it. I could tell you what, the ten-year outlook, ten years ago, looks completely different than the ten-year outlook that we have today. And that is going to change the way land in this city gets developed. I mean, we're, like I said earlier, we're slated thousands of homes. With that, already comes, this, this property could all of a sudden be a very attractive to a business park or something like that. So I guess, how I look at it, using, you know, reasoning like, oh, it's sat for so long, it's, you know, hey, no one wants it. But I know that's gonna change, because I know it's in our future, because we've been dealing with this for the last couple of years, and we've, we've watched things happen in this city that is going to happen. And so that kind of puts into perspective what some of this property values to this city really is, and where do we want this value? Because one of my responsibilities is to make sure we have, you know, economic growth in this city. I mean, for our police department, for our Parks and Rec Department, for public outreach programs, things like that. And one way that happens is by having commercial. So to change a zone for a project that has no plat is is be hard for me to do.
Definitely understood, Mayor Wilson, Councilmember Schroeder. I would go back again to the reasons why it hasn't developed for industrial today, and that's the site being lower, the limited access. And is really this type of development, zoned or general planned or not, appropriate next to residential? I know folks here are opposed to what we're proposing without necessarily knowing what could happen today. My vision, if left unchecked for this, is it's probably a commercial development. It's probably a storage-type development, maybe an outdoor sales that could take advantage of this long frontage that doesn't need the depth. That is a discouragement, if you will, to more industrial type of development. I don't have a crystal ball. I can tell you that if the if the council wanted, and I'm kind of looking at Rudy if this could work, we'd have no problem with the stipulation that a preliminary plat be submitted within six, nine, twelve months, that I'd go forward with something like that. Was that a reasonable timeframe to prepare? Yeah. So we could, we could certainly agree to that. And with the development standards that are locked in, it really, if this were approved, it couldn't be anything other than this.
So I do agree with you in that point. With the odd shape of the land, you try to think, well, what makes sense that would go there commercially? So that, that I do agree with you in that respect as far as the zone change. We just want to make sure we're changing it for real reasons.
Understood. Thank you.
Tess, did you want to ask a question?
Nope.
Okay.
Just a clarification on one thing. In the directives, it talked about an HOA and wider streets. Are these private streets? It's not gated?
It's not gated. They are meant to be private streets.
Okay, so that will be covered under the HOA, because that was left out.
That is correct. Yes.
This is a weird lot. I don't have to tell you that, you know, that. I do not like industrial up against residential. I think that's wrong, and I think a lot of business up against residential is wrong. This is our business corridor, but because the lot is kind of a bizarre lot, and it backs up to a well-established neighborhood, I would rather have it residential than commercial, because even what, I'm limited in development of commercial property, but this doesn't fit the mold. It doesn't just fit the shape. So as far as the residential piece of it, I don't have an issue with it.
I have discussion after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If acceptable, I'd love the opportunity to come back up and address any specific questions.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to discuss? Yes?
I noticed he didn't mention my property. I don't have any brush in front of mine. I have a house on the corner, and I don't have a problem with a one-story home. Or, for example, at Broadway and Ironwood, there's a strip mall, and that doesn't have near the amount of room that he has.
Your name and address, will you tell us, please?
Sure.
Name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies. William D. Munson, nine zero seven East Desert Avenue.
Thank you.
Now, we talked about the views, and you're right, something's always gonna obstruct the view. But one of their points at the zoning commission was they're gonna put three-story structures arbitrarily in that area, and their brag is that they'll have beautiful vistas of the mountains at our expense, of course. Now, the building just says twenty-foot wide. Is that outside? Because if it's true, then there are only nineteen inside. I'm sure you people have living rooms bigger than that. They have no self-owned area outside. It's all common. And the, they're wasting an extra three feet because they want a nine-foot ceiling for heaven knows what reason. Well, we'll take that three feet, if you don't mind, make them eight foot. We'll take all we can get. There's complexes going in at Tomahawk. They've okayed the one at Ironwood and and around the curb to sixty. They're gonna have to have some services to take care of these people. They have nothing more than these strip malls. Not all of your commercial areas are thirty and thirty-five feet tall. Maybe we'll snag a strip mall. We'll live with that. I'd just as soon take my chances on that. These people are gonna be packed in like rats. I just, I don't know why anyone would okay a rat's nest like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes?
Craig Jones, nine forty East Desert Avenue. Sorry, I've got a ton of notes. Well, one of the biggest things, you know, we talked about the views, and we understand they're not protected. We've heard at thirty-five feet with commercial, that's still, who's to say there's not another rezoning scenario? Like, you know, we don't know what's gonna come. We know how tall these are. We know what this looks like. He's presented a picture, and, you know, we asked for polls. You know, we started out trying to be accommodating. You know, we, we asked for polls indicating two stories, three stories, you know, height, so that we could sit back there and be the stick figure. We never got them polls. Nothing ever happened. I talked about last time, one of the biggest things is I have kids. That house on the corner that he said he would, he could understand if if that was his house, how he would be upset. That's my house. That big one on the corner is mine. And we have a pool that we put up, you know, seasonal. And I have a nineteen-year-old daughter and a fourteen-year-old son and friends. And at fifty feet away, doing my math, I'd have to be proven that that wouldn't, you know, but what I see is somebody in a top window looking down over my mandatory six-foot wall. I don't get to put a twenty-foot wall up. Not that I would want to, but if privacy become more important than view, I don't have anything to do about that. So I know he had mentioned the dirt. With all this lower, you know, you talk about, use the word low and water. That scares me. I don't, I don't like the word low and water. That means, you know, it's either gonna pull up, that's got, you know, I'm sure they're doing their due diligence, but it's, the water scares me. The thirty-five percent used over the property, but that's over a hundred percent of the property. You know, it's not like thirty-five percent up front and then sixty-five percent out back. You know, we got thirty-five percent in the whole triangle, you know? I don't know. I don't quite understand the B four and the B one and the B two, but I know what this is. I see it. Three stories, fifty-five feet away from my, you know, that's fine. The easement, that is a curbed easement off of desert pumps or roll pumps. I don't know why we'd have a curb for a SRP electrical easement. You know, that's an easement that goes out, and them, them businesses use that to get out onto the road right now, me included. We, I have a gate off the back of my property. I, what about my access? I bought that house with gate to an easement, and then he's saying that it's not an easement. Well, somebody's wrong. You know, something sounds better for some side. The polls, you know, like I said, we've asked for a little bit of things, you know, some clarification. Nothing. Nothing was ever done. That doesn't put good taste in our mouth. When we get to construction and there's water, you know, dust control and all that stuff, are we gonna have the same kind of accommodations? We ask questions, or we, you know, have problems with what's going on? Are we just gonna get nothing, like the polls? You know? I guess to kind of close the whole thing out is, we don't know what that looks like. I know everybody always, if you have a high and a low, it would beheave him to make industrial sound like the worst scenario. That way, he can get his residential approved. Nobody's talked about what the minor side of those are. I don't know if get and go or something like that. I don't know if that's part of that. I don't know what it is. But if it's single-story, all this is done. The trail's loud. There's cars and stuff going down the trail all, all the time, you know? I mean, that's not, that's not really one of our concerns. Traffic, I know he's got a slowdown rate, but you got a hundred and seven people, a hundred and seven places, two cars minimum per deal. You know, that's a lot of people put in this, in this little area that's not really accommodating for it right now. So, but to me, myself, my kids' privacy is extremely important to me. So, thank you.
Hi, Donna, resident of Apache Junction. I was just thinking about what he was saying is, is if you think back to the fact that he bought the property for what his views are, and the new people who are buying the property are taking his views for their views. So, I mean, to me, I don't think that's really actually fair, but I also was thinking is, is I remember my sister living in the city, and this old couple laying down there, sunbathing in the nude. Where is their privacy? If you're looking out the second or third-story window into somebody else's backyard, where is their privacy gone? They don't, they won't have it anymore. If they have their curtains open and they're doing something, maybe husband or wife, where is their privacy from the person who's on the second or third story looking in their windows? But the other thing I want to ask is, 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 on the Old West Highway, before you reach Tomahawk coming from this direction, I know, because I brought my boys over there to ride their dirt bikes, there is a wash that actually goes under the road. Where's the wash gonna go? My understanding is those people are already having problems over in that area with water flooding. So I would just like to know, I mean, if it it doesn't show the wash on there, it shows all buildings. So just wondering where the wash went.
My name is Lisa Dehart. I live at one zero two four East Estevan Avenue. And it seems to me that a lot of the concern is how the community would be best served in this area. And to reiterate what others in the, in my neighborhood have said, privacy is a main concern. You can't tell me that I'm gonna go out in my backyard if this is built and not be able to see a thirty-foot building from my backyard. The, the trees and things behind my yard are not that tall. I mean, maybe, maybe ten feet, but they're not that tall. And you can't tell me that somebody in a two- or three-story house wouldn't be able to see into my backyard with three little girls. I have a problem with that. And I think that everybody else has pretty much summed up the rest of my concerns. Thank you for your time.
George Schroeder, two four four West Virginia Street, AJ. Number one problem is they fell into this property. They knew about it when they put the freeway in there and closed off the Old West Highway in one direction in that area. They knew about it. So now they're stuck with it. They can't do nothing with it. So, my goodness, it's a hot market, so let's build three-story buildings in the middle of nowhere and block everybody's vision. Listen, I've talked about this several times. They come in for the views. Oh, oh, wait, we're gonna sell them for new houses and block their view. They come in, we're gonna build these houses and block their view. It's the same old story. But I don't think these people should benefit, because they didn't do anything with it in that sixteen, seventeen years, that they knew what was gonna happen. And it's money for nothing, because they knew about it before they bought it. Make no mistake about it. This is money for nothing for them. Now, three-story buildings, we don't want them. We don't want them. That's the whole premise under AJ. Current residents being blinded by the new thirty, thirty-foot view, notwithstanding, where do these people come from? Don't they understand that we don't want it here? Why do they keep coming? I, I know why, but hey, I'm told I can't say that. But it is Zionism, and they're, they're doing stuff that go against what we've always had. And what do I always say? Do not block my vision of the mountain. That is not in my best interest. It's none of our best interest. We need to find a different use for this property. Three-story buildings, nobody wants it. Three-story buildings, nobody wants it. So, again, if it doesn't fit our needs, you need to tell these people, no. Just say no.
Hi, Council, my name's Therese Manjin. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I reside at nine thirty East Desert Avenue. And aside from all of the conversation about blocking the view, I'm originally from Scottsdale. I've seen growth. I grew up there. It is a community that's high density with residential areas like this. This area that we're in on Old Highway, it is not a high-density residential. It is the entryway coming from Gold Canyon from the sixty into our area. And you don't want to come in and see a three-story wall blocking a residential area. That's not welcoming. It would be better suited, on a totally different topic, to rezone that as a commercial for medical clinic or something for all the incoming thousands of homes that are being built and the community that is going to need businesses like that. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Council, I'm Tracy Praffitt. I reside at nine eighteen East Desert Avenue. Everyone's talked about the views. Yes, I'll miss the views if they go. That is huge. We bought our property about eight years ago and we have a beautiful view from our back patio that everybody sees. I'm not going to focus on that because I want to focus on, you know, we support the businesses. We go out to restaurants, especially through this last year. It's been difficult for everyone. I think there is, there does need to be more rooftops, but why high density? You know, high density is just not a good fit, I don't think, for this area. Traffic, the infrastructure of the city, I'm concerned about, you know, internet access in this area is already bad. It's not the greatest. I pay the highest price for what I have because I work at home and it's still not good. Roads, you know, just, I can go on and on, but it's not all about the view. I just wanted everyone to hear that it's more about, you know, as a community, what we can do or what's best for this community. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. The council has comments. Yes. Kelly?
We're going to go down the line or yeah?
Kelly?
I just have to say, I'm, I'm very conflicted because I am fearful about the possibility that we're not going to be able to get light industrial into that area. But then I also don't like three stories and a hundred and seven lots in that small of an area. So, and for the people, the view, and I've experienced that very same thing. And, and it's very frustrating and, and I completely understand that. So, I don't know, but anyway, I just, it's a difficult choice for us. So, you know, we're trying to do what's best for the city as well. So, that's it.
The only comment I want to make is, everybody's hung up on three stories. Okay, it could be two stories, but let's go one step farther. We could say it's one story and build it thirty-foot high. So, it's not any different. Thirty feet is thirty feet, whether it's one story, two story, or three stories. There's nothing stopping them. You could put a, if you want to go with the route of no homes and put in business there, Krista said it, we could put a dentist office there that's looking right over your wall, two stories high, that's thirty-foot high, and they can still look right into the yards. It's going to be, you know, it's the same, whichever way you go.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it, it, it's actually smaller if it goes to residential. It's actually lower, it's thirty feet, isn't it, from thirty-five? It, it's zoned for what, what it's zoned for. The, the height is, is what it is. And I, I have to agree with Councilmember Greml. Look, I've, I've got an acre and a quarter, I've lived here almost thirty years, I get the mountain view getting obstructed. There's nothing, you, you buy it, you think, okay, I got the, the prime location and, and this is going to be it, and you get neighbors. It's, it's part of the, it's part of growing, it's just, we have to balance that. My bigger concern is this, I actually leased the property to the west of that for many years. I was a business there, before the business there, and it's a friend of ours that has it now. And when you, when you mix businesses that close with houses, you get a lot of conflict, you get a lot, you got noise, you got smells. So for me, that, I totally get the privacy issue, but unless, I, I mean, unless that's completely changed, where you can change the height, it, the height is what it is. It could be, whether it's a dentist office or, or, you know, an individual homeowner, it is what it is. For me, I'm more concerned about mixing in that area, and I'm going to go against what I completely said about the other development. I'm concerned about having that tight corridor mixing businesses and especially industrial. Especially, we had on Twelfth Avenue, we had a, I don't know if you guys remember, we had a junkyard right there in a residential, what a mess. Actually, my husband and I helped clean that up, but what a mess. I'm, you know, when I start hearing that that's zoned for industrial right there with you, by you guys, I mean, this could be really noisy, smelly, it could, it's, but the height is what it is, unfortunately. There's apartments, you've got apartments even just to the, for a little bit further west, same thing. They're looking down into some of those houses back there. Some of you guys were, were our neighbors and I get it. I do get it. High density, we're trying to protect the horse property, so that becomes an issue of, you know, where, we need some high density. Some people don't want yards. And again, we're just, it's like, where do you fit it in? And so, dust control is an issue, privacy's an issue. I, I think, it sounds like this development, these developers certainly willing to work. We've had this before when, I don't know if Gal and maybe Tess remember on planning and zoning, you'd get the neighbors that would come and, and have the same issue. It's, and nobody wants us in their backyard, but the developers were actually willing to change the plan and at least work with the people. And so, I would hope that we can see that, but man, I just, I don't want to mix industrial right, backed up right with this, I don't know why it was zoned that way. I just, I, I would rather see you guys mixed with neighbors and people than, than businesses and industrials, so.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So this is changing the zone. This isn't approving any build or anything like that. So, one of the things that we have expressed concern is that the dentist office can come in there, a warehouse could come in there, a manufacturing plant can come in there. So I, I'm not against rezoning it for the residential, but I will say it'll be a very hard sale if the plat came back at thirty feet for me.
Being in real estate for thirty years, if someone was going to buy a house that backed up to any vacant lot, my advice was beware, something will go there. You may like it, you may not like it. It may be one story and additional housing or zoning can change. And that's the unfortunate part of it. This is too big of a parcel for any one of you to say, well, we'll buy it and then our view is still our view. It, it doesn't work that way. Someone asked why this high density and why this height. One of the problems that we have in real estate now is affordability. And Royal Palm has nice-sized homes on nice-sized lots. That's not affordable for developers anymore because nobody could afford to buy the house, even if it was a small house. Because by the time you put in the infrastructures that are necessary, it, nobody would build it because there'd be no money to build it. We need high density and the fact that it's condos or townhomes and not apartments, I prefer to have the homeownership. Because they also take pride in it. I don't have a problem with the three-story because the height is the same as what it would be there and, not someone with my needs, but a lot of young people like three-story homes. And if you drive around this valley and any apartment complex you see being built is three stories. They, they, they're not, they have to get the density in there to make it affordable and profitable. And those two things, like it or not, are what is important because nobody's going to build it if it's not a profitable endeavor either. My problem is I want to see some timeframe commitment of when we could get a preliminary plat that this is real. We've just been surprised way too many times. I certainly don't ever want to see industrial next to residential again. And we have areas off of Tom, right off of Tomahawk and Eighteenth and Nineteenth that backs right up to another section of Royal Palm subdivision and a mobile home park. That is just trouble looking to happen. So, I really don't have an issue with it. It's an odd piece of property. And I think this high density that it has will be good for that area close to the sixty to get some young couples in here that will go to work somewhere.
So I think you kind of just hit one of my points right on the head is they'll go to work somewhere and the problem is, is it's not in our community, which I take huge issue with. If you look at Apache Trail or Old West Highway, depending on which side you're coming in from, if you come in directly from the west, you immediately hit commercial, you immediately hit what feeds and, and keeps the city running, which is the, the sales aspect. If you come in from the east off of Gold, or out, coming from Gold Canyon, it takes you miles to even hit anything of substantial development outside of maybe a church or, you know, some, some residential. This entire corridor is zoned for commercial or light industrial. We talk about growth south of the sixty. We are going to be inundated with residential south of the sixty. It's going to happen. I went in and looked and I asked Larry and staff about how much B four zoning we have. It was mentioned, I believe, in the presentation, sixty acres. It's give or take twenty to twenty-five vacant parcels at this point in time throughout the city. Sure, we can talk about, you know, well, we might get future B four zoning south of the sixty or, or south of baseline. Well, we might not, we very well might. I, I don't know, I can't live in the, the world of may or may not happen. When I look at our general plan, this does go against our general plan and, and I know I kind of waffle based off the, the previous case, but to me, this is vastly different. Superstition to, to Apache Trail and Old West Highway, this is our downtown. This is exactly what we want to see people coming in and out of town for. If we give away this zoning, I mean, the, the height issues aside, we've all addressed those, that's non-issue for me. It, it's what's going to draw people to the northern end of town. I don't see how a residential zone, be it a single-family, you know, one-story houses or three-story apartment complexes or a, a, whatever, changes that. I don't see how this development in this location draws people into our community from the east or from the south, north. That future development, they're going to have their own grocery stores, they're going to have their own restaurants and all of that. So all of that is taking away from them coming into the northern parts of Apache Junction and really potentially hurting those future businesses. So, I also worry about the, the plat discussions, I mean, that is for future conversation. I, I think this is a good concept, it's a good idea, it's a terrible, terrible area.
I just wanted to be clear a little bit because I know what I said about the, I'm not opposed to switching over to residential, kind of contradicts what I said in the previous thing, but it does really have to do with the, the odd shape of the lots, of, of what would make sense going there. Now, if, if the majority of the council chooses, you know, not to rezone it to residential, may I suggest that in the future, we just zone it to straight commercial, get rid of the industrial. That would eliminate the manufacturing plants and anything along those lines. So if, if we decide not to convert it to residential, let's consider getting it straight
Okay, I, I've got one question and we'll ask Joel, maybe it needs to go to Larry. Individual had talked about the, the easement there on the very west side up from his house going up to Old West Highway. Is, just because of an easement, is that giving him the right-of-way of using this? Is that going to impact, how's that going to impact him?
Well, it depends on the easement. If it's what call, what's called under the state law, federal law passed down, federally patented easements, that's a roadway easement. So, whether the city maintains it or not, that's a different issue. So I don't know what kind of easement it is. I, I thought I heard someone say it's a public utility easement. That's what I thought someone said, but maybe Nick can, Nick can clear it up or maybe somebody else. So it depends, but that wasn't the, that's not the access to that house. The access to that house when that house was built was probably the street that it's on. So.
Larry?
I have a question to you as well.
I don't know if, you want, you want an answer on the easement issue?
I just wondered if he knew what.
Joel, would it be, would it qualify for a prescriptive easement from continuous use for seven years? Would that fall under that or the patent would supersede that?
Well, if it's a patent, you can't, you, you can't get a prescriptive easement, number one, because it's a government entity. However, what's a prescriptive easement is where someone uses a piece of property for a period of time openly, they call it notoriously, that's the legal term. And then they can go to a judge and say, your honor, I've been using that for this long and I am entitled to use it and to continue to. But I don't know if I see that here because, once again, it might be a public utility easement, but I don't know. So maybe you have an answer.
I don't, I don't necessarily have an answer because I don't, I haven't seen an ALTA survey of this property. That's where easements usually show up. An ALTA is American Land and Title Association. So the area in green, as Nick pointed out, that is city dedicated right-of-way in the form of an alley, if you will, just like Old West Highway is now city right-of-way. Whether there is any other kind of easement on here until we really saw a title report or something, or again, if it's, someone is claiming a prescriptive easement because it's been used for some period of time, it's the court that has to decide that, correct you?
Yes, if it's in the gray part of the map, but if it's on the green, that's, like you said.
This green is city right-of-way. Yeah, well, the developer cannot use that property.
Right, that's off the developer's property, so.
Yeah.
So I don't think that is the issue.
The developer is not allowed to use that alley at all, period.
Okay.
They're not proposing to use it either on the site plan.
Can you go back to that other picture? Because that was part of my question too. Where on the far west side, halfway up, right there, that's an, that's actually an alley, right? That's an alleyway.
That's an east-west alley.
And they use that for trash pickup, don't they? No, there's no trash, because, okay, but it's like drivable, I mean, people drive Will, will this ever, will that ever go away? Okay, that can't go away.
This alley. Now again, we have to go back and look. Now again, we have to go back and look. That could have been part of this plat. I don't know. I don't know the history of it. But it's east-west alley. Again, it's city right-of-way, dedicated.
Okay, it is, okay.
So likely that happens usually as part of a plat. Whether it was part of this Royal Palm unit, whatever unit it is, I'm not sure.
And then the north-south, is it? The north-south easement that we're calling it, that's got, that's got power poles or telephone poles or something on it. I don't know if they're live, if they're still used, but at least halfway down there, there's lines. I don't know what the lines are that have been there for decades. So, so.
There could be utility easements. Again, again, that is green, that's city right-of-way. That's a city alley dedicated to the city. How it got that way, we could investigate. If there are other utility poles, those utility companies have, likely have easement rights, just.
So those would probably never go away, is my point.
Unless they're undergrounded. You know, we require as part of these developments, if it's 12K or less, they have to be put underground.
Mr. Mayor, I should redirect the discussion because now we're, we're not really talking about rezoning. We're talking about some other issues, so you should probably limit it to rezoning.
Yep, I wanted to address that, yes.
I have one question for Larry. Just curiosity question because it was brought up. Weeks Wash isn't on any of this property, is it?
Weeks Wash is no.
Because it was brought up about, about the wash, but it's further, further east a little bit.
Yeah, there's ponding areas north of here, of course, but that is further to the east on this. Well, if we could pull up Google Maps or whatever, we could do that, but.
If I may, that, that's not a rezoning issue. That is a plating issue.
That's to the east, though.
This is Weeks Wash, right here.
Thank you, Rudy.
The very eastern tip of the property, flood zone's a little wider. There are a couple of minor tributaries that go through the site. Some of it goes through this person's house here, but this is the Zone A Weeks Wash there.
Okay. All right, can I have a?
I've got one more thing, Your Honor. When we talk about bringing people into the area, we're, this is, this, we're talking about affordable housing. And that's, that's also been an issue here in the community. So if a project, this would be bringing people into the community. You know, again, I just, I think about if I lived in that neighborhood, what would I want next to me? And it certainly wouldn't be industrial or, or commercial. That I would prefer to have residential next to me, and so that's.
All right, I'll call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I move that ordinance number 1501 be read by title only and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 1501, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in the planned development rezoning case, PZ-1-20, a request by Apache Junction 772 LLC, represented by Greg Loper from Business Park, from Business Park B-1 to high-density multiple-family residential by Plan Development RM-1 PD and approving a minor general plan amendment changing the land use designation from light industrial Business Park and industrial to high-density residential, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Now, can I have the main motion?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I move that ordinance number 1501, as read by the city clerk, be denied.
Do I have a second? Okay, do I have another motion?
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number 1501, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Again, this does not give a green light to put up a thirty-foot-tall structure, but I'll, I'll say yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
I have to agree with Mr. Schroder, and this is something I believe we can work with the developer on. But we also have to remember that there's, there's normal-sized commercial property across the street that would be better fit for, I, I just, I can't see having industrial in there, so I'm going to say yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
No.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes, has it?
Motion passes, Your Honor, six to one.
Okay. Public hearing to consideration for ordinance number 1499, a city-initiated rezoning of the 2.35 acres on Roosevelt that was continued from the January nineteenth council meeting. Yeah, just wait a second.
This is not the right one, so.
It's not the right one?
Okay, this is not the right one, I'm sorry.
I'll open up the.
I can't access the, the S-drive. Can I? No?
No.
Okay. Yeah, is that okay?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. Oh, wait, this is.
Is this the one?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what happened. It's a January nineteenth for some reason, okay.
Rude to toy with our emotions like that. We were ready to run.
Calling it back to order again.
This should be a fairly quick presentation. So my name is Kendra Elnar. Thanks for your time today, councilmembers and Mayor Wilson. And this is a continuation from January nineteenth. The, the city-initiated rezoning, PZ-719, for nine-seven-eight East Roosevelt Street. So just another quick summary of the case. This is a 2.37-acre parcel that had numerous code compliance issues. Is donated to the city by the previous owners in 2016. And it had, and it lay vacant and in the possession of the city since. So staff are encouraging rezoning for this development. So this has been a complex issue and we have recommended different types of rezoning options for the purpose of processing a lot split in order to maximize the city's investment from the expenditures of, like, cleaning up the property. And staff has considered all stakeholders' concerns and see the development potential for this parcel that, to benefit the city. And so today, we propose the P&amp;Z recommendation and additional options. So the zoning map, again, it was, it, to the east of the property is Zoned RM2 Multi-Family Residential. And to the north, south, and west is predominantly RSGR Low Density Residential. So the current zoning is RSGR General Low Density Single Family Detached Residential. And the P&amp;Z Commission-recommended rezoning is RSGR PD. So this is the future land use exhibit from the 2020 general plan that shows a variety of land uses in the area. And the parcel in question is projected to be low-density. And then this is just another topography map that visualizes the wash constraints of the buildable area specifically to the west side. But this further supports why P&amp;Z and staff recommend RSGR PD. And here are other potential parcel configurations we prepared for you tonight. We recognize all stakeholders' uncertainty and we just want to make sure you guys have provided all the options with land split options and horses, horses or no horses. Yeah, I, I was going to go back to it later, where we can discuss it further. And also at your desks, we placed a recent real estate compositions for the pricing of different lots that are being split for either two lots or three lots, just the pricing on that. So we can go and talk about that later. So, so on December eighth, 2020, staff presented at the planning and zoning meeting for the continuation of this item and displayed two requested lot exhibits. The commission voted five to one for the approval of the rezoning case from RSGR to RSGR PD for the purpose of creating a two-lot land split with 1.25-acre lot on the west and a 1.12-acre lot on the east, under the conditions found in the draft ordinance, 1499. And you can see that in the staff report as well. And this was the approved exhibit that has been changed to the correct setbacks. And then, so staff has proposed a variety of zoning designations for this property and to consider all stakeholders. Staff still support the recommendation for the P&amp;Z-approved rezoning from RSGR to RSGR PD, subject to the conditions found in ordinance 1499. And staff has also noted that the proposed rezoning will include a minor general plan amendment because the minimum lot size for RSGR-zoned lots is typically 1.25 acres. But final decisions are up to the council, so we can go back to the table here and discuss. Any questions?
Counsel, have you questions?
I guess I have one question. We're back to the table. What is, okay. Split it, split the land three ways. I'll look at third one down, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then you can have horses?
This is just.
These were the options that the plan commission and everybody looked at. So the option is leave it as is, sell it as is, don't, and don't even rezone it. And then you can have horses on 2.37. You could do a three-lot land split with RS20 that would not allow horses. If you did RS20 PD, then you could have horses, which staff originally thought, well, there's horses in the area. It does set that precedent, though, of having horses on small lots. And then we looked at various configurations of splitting it right down the middle or one is an acre and a quarter and 1.1.2. And then is it the lot to the left or the lot to the right? That is the horse lot. So that is just an option. With the PD, you could allow horses on any, any configuration of lot. Again, it's just that slippery slope of having horses on less than an acre and a quarter.
So that split down the middle that was introduced on the last meeting, you can go to PD and then that, because one of the biggest, you know, issues were which side would have the horses and which side wouldn't.
Went the wrong way. So where's the, did I go too far?
Yep.
Not far enough.
There you go.
There. So that, again, there was discussion at the last meeting of whether you split it down the middle. So every lot, both lots are 1.18 and one is 1.17, or mathematically however that works. But the plan commission recommendation was to have an acre and a quarter on the west, 1.12 on the east, and horses only on 1.25.
But if you did the PD, you could have them on either, on both.
If you did them on PD, again, it just sets the precedent of allowing. Everybody's going to come in and ask, "Hey, I got 1.12, can I have horses?"
Gotcha.
And then the last one was, you know, when you look at the zoning map, you know, you look at the future land use map is one thing, but if you look at the zoning, I don't know that people, I say this all the time, I don't think people realize how much RM2 is in the city. But these are probably relics from the county zoning.
Yeah.
And so everything else is low-density residential. Just to the west is really what we've designated downtown at the edge of Royal Palm. And then the RM2 is all the darker brown. And then the lighter yellow is a different zoning. But there's a lot of RM2. So that's why one option, really, it's not spot zoning if you actually made it what Mr. Bowreider has at RM2. So that is another, technically another option of going through and having it zoned multifamily. So again, still would be a general plan amendment because it's designated low-density. So this, the final, I think, is we were asked to put this exhibit together, which is, shows the right-of-way dedication in the orange, shows a 25-foot front setback, the two RSGR, the side lots are 20. So the only deviation now we're talking about is a 25-foot instead of a 40-foot front setback, which takes the PD because you're doing the front setback.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question for Larry, but before I do, Joel, I have a question for you, which is, Larry keeps saying, or he's mentioned a couple of times, that we'd be setting a precedent. Now, sometimes we can, we can put a condition on something because of its peculiar need. That's not necessarily setting a precedent by saying, this right lot, if we went this way, it's only, what is it, 1.19 or 13 or something like that size lot? And we could say, okay, they can have two horses there. Now, that's not really setting a precedent, is it? Or are we bound to that for future lots that are less than 1.25 by allowing them to have horses?
Mr. Mayor and councilmember, yes. It's, it's setting an expectation, but it's not setting a legal duty so that the next person that comes in, you have to give it to them. But does it set an expectation? Perhaps it does. It's happened on, it could happen on other things like sheds and cargo containers, for example. That's happened in the past. But for horses, does it, does it do that? It doesn't set a legal precedent, no.
So we're not legally bound? I mean, it's, we wouldn't have a problem then, somebody else who comes in with a, just little over one acre and said, "But you gave it to them, so I'm going to sue you because you gave it to them and now you won't allow me."
Well, if they could establish a pattern of giving it out to a certain class of person or class of developers, then, then they might have some kind of claim. But if, if you're in your motion, if you say, "Here's why we're doing it this time, and it's for, it's because of the, the peculiarity of the lot," that's something I think is very defendable in court.
So let me ask a quick question. Okay, we're talking about this being a PD and we can allow it in a PD. If it was 1.18 acres and it wasn't a PD, that would not qualify for it, correct?
Through the PD, the council can say whether you want to allow horses or whether you want to limit the number of horses if you do allow them. So I think what councilmember Nesser was saying is you could have one at 1.25. They can have as many horses as they want. But because they don't have an acre and a quarter, the council could limit the 1.12 to say just two horses, for example.
So, Mr. Mayor, my concern with what you were mentioning, Tess, in regards to a precedent, is the fact that this is a city-initiated rezoning. I mean, do we only allow it when we want it because it behooves us? I, I mean, what's to stop somebody from coming in and wanting to rezone their property because they don't currently have the ability to have horses and they want them? To me, that's a concern. Personally, I disagree with the fact that it's 1.25 acres for horses or, or not. I think we need to lower that, but that's a debate for another day that will come about at some point. I think this also gets us into bigger issues, again, which we're facing cargo containers or sheds or, you know, where do we draw the line? I don't want to see horse property go away, but I think that if we leave it at 2.37 acres, the whole thing can have horses and the city loses out. If we zone it the way that staff is recommending, we kind of please both sides, in my opinion. We could take away that altogether, but then we have to then debate the, do we make the precedent because we want it and we can do it because we have that power? Or because we want to open up that can of worms, which I personally think we will.
Your Honor? I drove out there and spent quite a bit of time out there. Walked as far as I could around the fence and down to the wash and looked down and around and there's.
You didn't climb over? You were missing out.
What's that?
You didn't climb over?
You didn't climb over, you're missing out.
Yeah, no. Didn't need to, you can see it. I think we've really complicated an issue. I am in favor of keeping it the way that it is, selling it, because I think we'll sell it a lot quicker. Maybe we won't make as much, but it was a gift. To some degree, we have to make back some of the money that we've put into it. Leaving it whole, we will make that back and more. And let somebody else deal with the split. My concern is, I, 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 I looked at it and even going diagonal with the split, it's like, there's got to be, I think you're going to have a part of that if you split it that you're, we're going to end up stuck with for a good period of time. I'm not in favor of any split at all. Let's sell it and be done with this.
That was the rest of my question to you, that I started with Joel, was, can you just kind of give us some figures? These figures aren't, you know, from this, aren't telling us. But what viable figure can you expect to put it on the market for if it's one piece of property? If it's two pieces of property, or if it's three pieces of property?
I think we're guessing.
So, these are comps from a realtor on recent sales. So, this sheet that was handed out, we were asked by Councilmember Evans to look into this. She doesn't have a license anymore, I guess, so we asked a local realtor, and they said, these are recent sales. They're, they suggested that an acre and a quarter be listed at 115, whether you get it for that or not, but there is a recent sale of 115. Another one for 105, depends on the configuration. The 1.2, the realtor suggested 100. If you split it into three lots, you'll probably get one home builder to come in and buy all three lots, and those could be listed at 94 each. So, you end up with $270,000. Again, a typical developer does what we saw here tonight for the last three hours. They come in, they rezone it, they upzone it, they maximize their profit by doing that.
And what's wrong with that?
So, the city could do that. We could rezone it. We could sell it for one and get less money. We could sell it for two and get more money, or we could sell it for three and get more net proceeds for the city. And then, in either of the scenarios, though, it, I think it's wise to bring water in. So, according to Mike Loggins, it would take about $35,000 if the water district put in the water instead of Arizona water. So, then you have to deduct from whatever proceeds you get if you put water in. But putting water in for 35,000, you can split that cost over three instead of two. So, again, staff, that's why we went ourselves through a lot of permutations as to what this could be. Originally, we said three lots, that's why we had the diagram, because we thought, even with some grading, which I think you end up having to do, you could get three lots here. So, ultimately, it's the council's decision, but this is what a local realtor said. This is what the market is doing right now.
But you're not talking about properties that have this kind, it's a, excuse my language, it's a bastard property with a wash like that? Do these property values that we were given have a wash like that? How are you going to get rid of it? I mean, who is going to want to buy a property like, we have no, the thing is, we have no guarantees. And frankly, I think we've wasted way too much staff time on it. I really do. It's a gift. It was a gift to some degree. Yes, we invested. Get the investment money, sell it and be done. There's no guarantee. What if we end up sitting on this for 20 years? Because you can't sell the one. I think we're wasting time.
Yeah, I don't, I think we're at staff level, ready to receive direction.
Yeah, we're ready, because we, we really, from a public policy standpoint, you know, we, we, like you said, this went through this whole process. Mr. Bowreiter can tell you, this is years in the works. We were given this, we've tried to, we've spent probably $30,000 of city taxpayer dollar to get it to this level and.
Yeah. You can get more than that, more than that and recover it and have extra money left, but this, this, I think we've just complicated a gift.
Besides, everybody's, as you said, we want large lots. Somebody's going to be looking for a large lot.
It's horse property, leave it horse property.
Go ahead, Gail.
Okay, I climbed over the fence on Sunday. And after, you know, it had rained last week. And after, I spent some time back there in the wash, and really, as a developer, that wash has basically been cut off. And the only water runoff actually comes from that mobile home park on the north, just where that road curves. That's the only place that water still enters there. Yeah, it was a gift. But for the highest and best use for our return on our money, I now agree that splitting it three ways, because a grader could go in there and clean that up and level it out in two days. And it would more than double what we would get for it. Because originally, I was for just selling it as one whole. But the potential is there with the high density of the mobile home park on the north, the business on the north, and then its high density directly to the east. Yeah, people want big lots, but even that size, splitting it three ways, it's still a big lot compared to what you can get in town. And the little house on the corner on the right-hand side of this screen, they're actually on a water tank. So, they could potentially, they would not only benefit, but share some of the cost of bringing that water over there. I, it's a weird little property, but a developer would take it as three lots, already split, ready to build on.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm with Vice Mayor in this one. Either one whole lot or split it right down the middle eliminates any horse debate and be done with it.
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm with either one of those two.
I, I, I'm out, on my own limb here. I think, never mind, I was going to make a joke, but I'm too tired for that. I think staff has invested far too much time into this to begin with. My issue with splitting it, I don't care which way we split it. There's money to be made, and I personally have a problem with the fact that we are even talking about profiting off of this property to begin with without actually having the conversation of what the hell we're going to do with the money? That, I mean, really, if we, if we keep it at one lot and let's just say we sell it for 160,000 and net 100,000, that's vastly different than splitting it for three lots and getting 300,000. Then we have to have the conversation of what we're going to do with the money. And, and I think that that's a problem in it of itself. I agree with keeping it one lot and letting whoever buys the property deal with it at that point. We're, we're not losing horse property at that point. We're not gaining horse property at that point. We've done enough. Let's move this and talk about something else.
Yeah, imagine all the fees you can impose on the buyer who wants to rezone it.
There is a public hearing tonight, too, Your Honor.
Kelly. Tess.
Whoever makes the motion, yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'd like to, from the public, have anyone come up and speak?
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. And I've been talking to Brayden online, is the property. You want to keep horse property? I do agree that you should keep horse property. But when you want to split it and say, okay, they're both going to be horse properties because it's the city that owns it, that's not fair. That's not right to anybody else. And, and I, I sat here and listened to a lot of the stuff that was going on tonight, and I thought to myself is, when you get up here and you talk to the city council or to the mayor, do you guys actually listen to anything that the people are saying? And the problems that they're having with what you're doing on changing a lot of the stuff? Hear the voices of the people that voted you in?
James Borick, 1054 East Roosevelt. I live in the big house. I've been coming to your council meetings for quite a few years now. I'd like to show you some of the pictures that this place used to look like. I don't know if they can do that or not.
Can we get those on the screen?
I don't care. You can pass them around. This is what I collected off of that property. You want to make horse property? This is the answer right here. You want your horses on that? I don't think so. Go ahead and make the west side horse property, make the east side horse property. You're going to have me on your case all the time. I'm sorry, but I've tried to work with you. Make the west side horse property, leave the east side alone. The poor guy in the front would have horses in his front yard. Now, I got to pick all this up, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, can I?
It only took me 10 minutes.
Joe, Joe, is this not already, am I, have I misunderstood? Is this not already horse property?
It is horse property, yes, ma'am. But do you want horses on this property? I don't. Not for, for the horses reason. Make the west side, do what you were going to do in the first place. Split it so you do have it and you don't lose property.
Okay.
You're going to have more problems than you can shake a stick at.
I think horse people ought to take care of their horses. I wouldn't put horses on a property that I didn't take care of.
Okay, anyone else want to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I ask for a motion on 1499?
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number 1499 be read by title only and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Everybody's sleeping.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes, getting late, yes.
Ordinance number 1499, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in rezoning case PZ-7-19, a proposed rezoning from general rural low-density, single-family detached residential, RS-GR, to general rural low-density, single-family detached residential by planned development, RS-GRPD, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing perseverance.
Your Honor.
Your main motion, okay, yes.
I move that ordinance numbered 1499 is read by the city clerk, be denied, that the property be left as it stands and sold as it is.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor, five to two.
Okay, no old business items? Consideration for administrative approval for certain liquor license applications? Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. The item before you this evening addresses a procedure that the city has followed. That the, that's a longstanding, my apologies. The item before council this evening addresses a procedure that the city has followed for many years. Under the, it addresses items under the umbrella of liquor licensing. So, it covers all liquor licenses and the extension of premises. The item addresses two specific liquor license series, a Series 15, which is for special events, fairs and festivals under the Series 16, and an application process for extension of premises. The city's process has been that everything that deals with a liquor license and an extension of premises come to council to be heard. As you know, that there are certain timeframes that we must follow for these, and we're usually always in compliance with those. In 2017, the, the Department of Liquor Licensing Control provided an industry notice that permitted a designee of a county or city or town that would authorize them to approve these specific items administratively, that they did not have to go before council. Specifically, we're addressing only special events, fairs, festivals, and the extension of premises. Recently, due to COVID-19, city staff is proposing an administrative procedure that would allow the city manager, city clerk, or their designee to approve the special event liquor license application, fairs and festivals only. And for this, I'm only asking for the temporary extension of premises. I think that council still would like to see permanent extension of premises. So, what I'm asking council is for that administrative process, for the city manager, myself, or our designee, to move forward in shortening that timeframe that we could approve these and get them or recommend denial. The process still would involve all four entities, planning department, building, fire, and PD, for their review of the application. And based on that recommendation, we would either move forward or have issues addressed. If, if, I apologize, if they recommend denial, it would come to council. But what this does is it can eliminate up to 21 days of waiting just for a special event liquor license, depending on when they submit their application. So, the process is outlined there with you this evening in the memo. Basically, it just reiterates the fact that we would still go through our normal process. It just would take you out of the picture for these items only. Any questions?
I have a question, Jennifer. And I think I'm thinking about this correctly, but in our motion that's written, the motion says extension of premises and not temporary extension. Do we need to, don't we need to say temporary?
I would in this case, but the application actually says temporary and permanent, so that's why I just called it the extension of premises.
Yeah, because that's a confusing thing for a lot of people anyways, that we're not approving a permanent extension of premises, it's only a temporary.
Right, and that's, the application just says permanent or, and temporary? And then you check a box?
Check the box, yeah.
You check a box? But I believe council would like to see all permanent extensions come before them.
Yes.
Your Honor. So, going back to my question from captains earlier, so if there's a sunset on that, then do they just then need to reapply and that goes through your office without any ever coming to us? So, what then would happen if and when executive order 2020-60 goes away? And then, the, the process would still remain with your office, right? It doesn't then need to come back to us?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have, just clear.
So, if you recommend denial, it comes to council, but if you recommend approval,
it just flows right through?
Yeah, we, in our turnaround frame, we're looking for two to three days, as quickly as possible. Let all of the four entities realize that, you know, we are looking for them to go do their safety inspection, do their ADA compliance. I believe Planning Development Services has issued their temporary seating use permit in two to three days. So, we're hoping to expedite that and get the applicant's request before the liquor board as soon as possible.
Okay, seeing no other questions? Do I have a motion?
Your Hon, Your Honor, I move that administrative authority be given to the city clerk, city manager, or their designee to approve applications for special events, fair and festival licenses, and temporary extension of premises, premise, application on behalf of the city.
Second.
Do I have a second? Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, we don't have any direction to staff items. Our next scheduled meeting in the city council is Tuesday, February 16, 2021. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone that the call to the public is a courtesy and is not required by law. It is time for the public to express their requests, communications, and comments and suggestions. Request to speak form must be completed and then handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues are presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place the item on a future agenda for council's decision. There's a three-minute limit for each speaker. And I have some, Perkins? Name and address and where you live.
Nola Perkins. I live at 145 South Palaverdy in Apache Junction, and thank you for staying here long enough to hear me complain. You've got so much bigger problems to solve than mine.
Thank you.
But I was sincerely hoping that when the marijuana law passed, that the dispensaries would have to apply for a new permit and that we could have a discussion on it, since that apparently hasn't happened. Maybe you guys can give me some advice of what I can do. They're ruining my neighborhood. They've had food trucks out there, both sides of First Street are lined with cars on both sides, they're parking in front of my house. It's not safe to drive, turn down my street. I turned down the other day and this car was backing up down, up the street and the traffic has just gotten unreasonable and I don't know what to do about it.
Okay.
Can I ask her a question?
No.
Direct staff.
You circle back to me and tell me what to do.
We can circle back to me.
Yeah, circle back to me and tell me what to do.
Okay, we'll do that at the end. Mr. Schroder?
George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street, AJ. There was a movie many years ago called Flowers for Algernon, or the movie Charlie with Cliff Robertson. I'm that experiment. I'm living that experiment. I have the distinct pleasure of knowing what you do not know because you either fear or don't want to go there or don't want to admit it or see it. I know the answers, but you don't. So when I come up here and people think I'm crazy and they're going like this behind me, don't think I don't see it, don't think I don't hear it. My neighborhood is inundated and has been and will be for the near future because our chief of police and our developmental service processes and our city managers choose not to look in my neighborhood, fix my streets, get rid of the crackheads and idiots in my neighborhood. So I'm the bad guy. I'm out for two hours at Home Depot spending good money. I come in, pull up my street, six minutes later, here's popo rolling down my street slowly in front of my house. I know what the complaint was, my music was up. Wow, is this what I got to look forward to the rest of my time? People, idiot people that are already breaking the laws themselves by having motor homes and fit wheels, their families are living in it, which is illegal, but nobody wants to look at it, nobody wants to see it because they're the divine few. I tell you again, I'm that experiment, I have the answers, I've seen what you haven't seen. I used that corner for my KOA a couple times, a tunnel here and there. I've been on that side, not because of drugs or drinking, because I refuse to conform to the people that think they own the state. It's never going to happen. I don't have a God and I don't have a boss or a master. So you better find out some way of making my neighborhood better because I'm not going anywhere.
Donna Carr?
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. The reason I wanted to talk tonight is about helping the needy. I know that the last mayor set aside money that came from COVID, and I think that we need to help the people out there. Believe it or not, there are people that are on SSI, live on less than $800 a month. So I don't know how they can afford to have a place to live, to pay their utility bills or to have food. And low-income housing is needed in Apache Junction to help some of these people. There's families out there with kids. There's elderly that can't afford a place to live. You got Walmart that, they don't even donate their money to your food bank. This food bank over here, just to let you know, cookies and cakes. Wow, that's great for people to live on. I don't know how they manage to stay healthy. I'm just saying is, is that there has to be a way that the city can help, whether it's donating money to, so I know that a lot of the churches used to help out people, but they can't do it anymore because churches were closed, people were not donating money to the churches anymore, so they didn't have the money to help the people who needed the help. Just saying is, is the money that the last mayor decided that he wanted to hold on to is, summer is going to be coming. Gee, it was 82 today. It's going to be here before you know it. Utility bills will run high. Is to look and have it in your heart to help the people. And I do realize too, is, is I know I wasn't going to talk about this, but I do realize AJ needs to grow. I don't want it to, but the fact is, is that unless you get people in here that are making the big bucks, we're only going to have Burger King and McDonald's. We're never going to have a TGI Fridays or Applebee's. It takes the people that are making the good money before these better restaurants move in.
Council have any requests for follow-up? Can?
Well, yes. The follow-up for the first speaker is, I mean, I know that law just passed and I mean, I don't know if this is a daily occurrence or if they're just having grand openings with the food trucks and that's why it was so busy, or if it's something that's just been going on for quite a while.
Certainly have a public nuisance law and we can, yeah, look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, I adjourn this meeting.